Is Thursday, December 14th, and happy eighth night of Hanukkah to those celebrating. We will begin with administrative business, the consent agenda. Before I ask if anyone wants to move it, are there any questions on any consent agenda items? All right, seeing none, would someone like to move the consent agenda? Thank you Suzanne, sir a second. Thank you Natalia. Natalia, your vote?
Yes.
Steven?
Epstein.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Said yes? Not sure Valerie can hear us. You can nod your head Valerie. Or a thumb up, you nod, all right Valerie votes yes, and I also vote yes.
Hi David, I'm here too, I didn't, did you just vote on?
Hi Helen, right on time, we're voting on the consent agenda, do you vote yes?
Yes.
Helen votes yes. Okay, so we will now move to the student report with Ms. Laura Clevis. Oh, I'm sorry, before we go to that, we do need to vote to approve the contract with Limouserie Engineering for Brookline High School's selective structural and waterproofing repairs in the amount of $119,430. Are there any questions on that before we move it? Seeing none, would someone like to move that we approved the contract?
I'll move it.
Sure.
Suzanne moves it, I'll go ahead and second it. Natalia, your vote?
Yes.
Steven?
Epstein.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Valerie? Helen?
Yes.
Seems like we're having a technology glitch for those who are remote. Helen indicated a yes vote, Valerie, yes vote? On the contract, you vote yes, thumb up?
Val, can you hear us?
Okay Valerie votes yes as well.
Yes.
And Mariah, do you vote yes on the contract? For the engineering for Brookline High School's selective structural and waterproofing repair?
Oh, yes.
All right, you also vote yes on the consent agenda, now that you're here?
Yes.
All right. Got that Betsy? Sorry, this is a little bit disjointed. And now, we will move to the student report with Ms. Laura Clevis.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Perelman. Good evening, everyone, I'm Laura Clevis, your school committee student rep, and let's get into it. Okay, so um technical difficulties. All right, yes. November to December at BHS, let's get into it. Okay, so, great, so we have a table of contents here, we're gonna be going over Powerpuff results, an overview of doors, student perspectives, and remarks from head of school Anthony Meyer. Okay, so I'd like to start my report off on a lighter note by briefly commenting on the annual BHS Girls Flag Football Game, AKA Powerpuff. I'll address the elephant in the room by saying that us seniors lost 23 to 21, which was definitely more than a little bit humbling, but regardless, both teams played exceptionally well, and despite the bitterly cold temperatures, the game was a remarkable show of school spirit and more importantly, unity. In the next couple of slides, you'll see some pictures I took while I was at the game. Definitely, there was a lot of passion, both by part of the seniors, dressed in red, and if you go to the next slide, the juniors, dressed in blue. Speaking of unity, I'd like to pivot to talking about one of the most important days of the school year, doors. For those of you who don't know, doors stands for Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity, where students and staff put school aside for a day to discuss race and racism. The day was four blocks long, from 8:20 to 12:40, festivities were held until much after. C block was devoted to keynote speaker Omar Muhadidin. It's all good. Who made use just this year after launching a mayoral building in Wilburn at the age of 19. A block contained a lesson on redlining in Boston and Brookline. Oh, sorry. Yes. My personal highlight, E block was dedicated to the telling their stories event, where students and staff shared their experiences vis a vis race and racism in front of the entire school. Subsequently, G block was spent discussing ways students can make a difference in their communities, and finally, a celebration was held at 22 tap-in after school until 2:30, where different affinity groups set up tables, sold or displayed various items and foods pertaining to their communities, and of course, plugged their club. My video. It is important to note that all days like these are vital to ensuring the BHS community makes strides towards becoming the accepting, inclusive, and forward-thinking community we want it to be. Programming like the ones we experienced on doors isn't a magical panacea for bigotry of any kind. As a matter of fact, many students, while appreciating the value the day brings, have valid perspectives on where doors could be improved. So, in a brief moment, I will be showing a video I made while I interviewed students on their participation in doors, the importance of the day, and their thoughts and feelings about this year's programming.
Our apologies to those in the audience for having some technical difficulties this evening. All right, so in the interest of time, we'll move to our next agenda item and then go back to the student report. So next up, we have the superintendent's report, spotlight on excellence. Dr. Hillary?
Are you almost there Betsy, or you still need more? Okay. All right, good evening, everyone, great to see all of you here with us tonight, as well as those of you viewing online. Our agenda for this evening is to go through some community highlights, share where I've been in past weeks and where I'm headed, important dates, and then get to our spotlight on excellence. The extension of the strategic plan survey, thank you to the individuals, families, staff that have responded thus far. In an effort to ensure ample opportunity for all voices or more voices in the community to be heard, we've extended this feedback survey period to Friday, January 5th, 2024 at 4:00 PM. This will then allow our team to assemble those results and then bring that back to the committee at the second meeting in January for a vote. Chronic absenteeism, I'm gonna read a statement here, a portion of a statement from Commissioner O'Reilly. "We acknowledge that there are often valid reasons for students to be absent, but to a troubling extent, students are missing more school now than they did previously. Before the pandemic, 13%, this is statewide data, of students were chronically absent, meaning that they had missed 10% or more of school. Last year, 22%, again statewide data, of students, close to one in four statewide, were chronically absent. So we are watching our data as well here in the public schools of Brookline. We'll be sharing some information tomorrow morning with parent leaders about this notion of attendance matters, and so it's important to be in school each and every day. We recognize the shift since the pandemic, there was a time, as parents, you would say you're going to school no matter what. But given the pandemic, this notion of keeping kids home when they're ill, so there is that balance that we are working with as well, so we need to be cognizant and understanding of that. So I think the big three that impacts our district data is illness, vacations, I'll say that again, vacations, and then some form of school avoidance. So we as a community need to wrap our minds around that and continue to work to improve our district data. Last year, we were approximately, as a district, about 14%. Prior to the pandemic, we were under 10%, around 8, 9, 10% prior to the pandemic. So we have some, we're improving over where we were the year following the pandemic, but we do have more room to go if we're trying to get back to our pre-pandemic numbers. Congratulations to Heath Hayes Chorus on Sunday, December 3rd, 39 students. Between grades five through eight from the Heath Roland Hayes School performed Lift Every Voice and Sing on the ice at Providence Bruins Hockey Game. The P Bruins are the farm team for the Boston Bruins in the NHL. By singing this song at the hockey is for everyone night, the students represented the Black National Anthem. Heath Hayes students are the first ever to do this at any AHL NHL event in the country. Congratulations to the Heath Chorus." This update comes from science teacher Goldner at Heath Hayes. "In October of this year, the eighth graders went to Hillside Pond in Milton to collect data related to the environmental changes. They used sediment cores and tree cores as sources of proxy data to interpret past environmental change. These are the same techniques that climate scientists use to gain an understanding of how our climate is changing. Using proxy data helps scientists build better climate models, make better predictions for the future, and hopefully lead to a society that is more sustainable, which will tie to our spotlight on excellence tonight. Students prepared presentations in which they explained what they did during the project, i.e. what observations they made, what claims they came up with, and why those claims make sense. BHS Winter Concert, Brookline High School's annual winter concert will take place Friday, December 15th, at the Robert Dubs Auditorium in Commons. This is a great way to take in the wealth of vocal and instrumental ensembles at BHS. The winter concert features performances by the Concert Choir, Acapella Choir, Camarada Choir, Concert Band, Music Collective, which is the advanced contemporary music ensemble, Concert Orchestra, String Orchestra, and Advanced Chamber Orchestra. Brookline Adult and Community Education Winter Camp, BASE, is organizing a winter camp for kids from December 26th to 29th. The four-day event will include activities like robot building competition, acting, singing, dancing, arts and crafts, Minecraft, and more. For more information, and it will be held at the Lincoln School, for more information, you can reach out to BASE at 617-730-2700, or register at BrooklineAdultEd.org. What did it say, five to, five to 12? The new Driscoll's ribbon cutting on December 4th, Val, can you hear us now?
I can hear you, it's, can you hear me?
I can hear you, great. So I'm gonna pass the mic to you, I know you had a proxy serving in this capacity, but if you'd like to share some information about the Driscoll ribbon cutting?
Absolutely, we had a great program, including a performance by students, along with the ribbon cutting of the school that opened on October 30th for, for our young people at Driscoll. We had select board, we had other town elected officials, town meeting members, and school committee members, it was really, really well attended. We had some great Driscoll dragon treats that were provided by Tapping Green at BHS. And a great time was had by all, these are some wonderful photos from the event. We gave out pieces of the old Driscoll, so pieces of brick from the old Driscoll, to those who attended, and if you didn't get one and would like one, please let me know.
Thank you Val. Superintendent's school visits, so as I shared, this, this year, we're focusing heavily on student engagement, so as I'm visiting schools, we're walking, principals and I are walking classrooms, assessing that form of, looking at student engagement and what principals are thinking about, what's happening in their schools. So we're seeing some great, great strides there, but also recognize we have room to improve and grow. So upcoming, I will be at Heath Friday, and then you can see the remainder of the schedule, trying to get to everyone before the winter recess. Upcoming dates, December 22nd is an early dismissal for winter break, December 25th through January 1st is winter break, schools are closed, and then January 20, January 2nd, I'm sorry, is the first day of school after winter break. And with that, we will shift to our spotlight on excellence. Our spotlight on excellence tonight is the BHS Indoor Garden. On November 27th, students, staff, and community members gathered in the BHS cafeteria to plant the first seeds in our new BHS farm. The goal of the farm is to grow and produce a weekly harvest of local nutrient-dense, organic, leafy greens and herbs to be used in the school lunch program salad bar. This initiative creates new hands-on service opportunities as we begin to recognize the impact that climate change is having on our students and the importance of offering opportunities to grow food sustainably. We are pleased to have with us tonight Ms. Sasha Palmer, the PSB Food Services Director, and I will turn the mic over to Sasha so that we can hear more about this program. Sasha?
Thank you so much, Dr. Hillary, I am sure I wanna share my screen. Okay. It's such an, before I begin, I wanna acknowledge all the food service workers or food service staff that is present today, I think I saw Mona, Rebecca, Paige, Haringa, and I think Karen Murphy's on. I cannot express how much work they are putting into these kinds of initiatives. Additionally, I also wanna acknowledge Roger Grande, who is, who isn't able to attend this today, he is our co-sponsor and co-coordinator of our indoor farm at BHS. Now, prior to COVID, community members, myself and community members, embarked on a vision of extending our growing season and to find ways to introduce and incorporate nutrient-dense food in our food service programs. We started with writing grants to many different places. I will say that we probably submitted three, four, five, I think about six different grants at different times, trying to fund this project. So it is an honor and we appreciate our financial partners, the National Education Association, the BHS PTO, and the food services budgets funded by all that additional funds that we're getting from Universal School Meals. This project, and we're gonna, we tentatively came up with a name to call it the farm. It is a collaboration with Roger Grande's students and a number of community members who have an interest in the creating, and helping students to understand, they are be aware of the food system and climate change. Our core activity in our work is to build a culture of sustainability in our food system. And it's great to see the participation and the excitement that students are bringing to this program. Now, our goal is to grow as much of our own food that, as we can, growing it in the most sustainable way as we can. And with our sustainability policies that is focused on hyper-local organics, we believe that this system or this program gives us the opportunity to do so. It is also a way of creating connection with students to give them hands-on opportunities to be, and to be invested in the school food service program, as well as all that investment that is going into sustainability. And this is the best way that we know how to. When we started our salad bars in school, our goal was to fund or find our way to produce our own food to service those salad bars. We hope that one day we will get to that, we are starting at BHS, and we hope to continue this in a number of other schools. So last, on November 27th, we embarked on a planting session where we had a huge turnout, I'm grateful for all the students that participated, I think we have, we had a very large turnout, students came out, we were trained, we were taught how to plant food, and I'm one of those people who were, I'm not a farmer, I didn't know what I was doing, but Todd or was able to give us that training, and he is very invested in helping us to achieve our goals. We were excited to see the level of support that we get, we got from community members. This is a community event, and as I go through and explain how we, we plan to, to continue this process, we'll see how important the community relationship, as well as the students' relationship is needed or is necessary. I also had an opportunity to put the superintendent to work, so that was, or to put this, got the superintendent hats dirty, so that was, that was a highlight of my day, I'm sure other students and community members have their own. We are, so we planted the last Monday or two Mondays ago, and we are hoping to harvest really quickly, this is very, well, before I get to that, we planted a number of crops, basils, lettuce, microgreen mix, spinach, kale, and parsley. And it was so exciting to see what it was, when we started, the first slide showed what it was. This was, this, these pictures were taken two days ago of where our plants are, I'm still trying to find out why the parsley is not happening, but I'm sure farmers or people who have more knowledge of how parsley grows can help me understand that. But we're hoping to have enough crops to harvest by, hopefully, before the end of the school year, before the winter break, or if not, at the beginning of the school year. When we, when we decided that we were getting these grow racks, we wanted to put it in the back of the cafeteria, because we wanted to have the ability of students to be engaged, to see the crops growing. We were unfortunately surprised that the electrical was not updated, and it wouldn't accommodate the number of different racks that we had planned. So we had to quickly come up with a new plan. Luckily, we have this great open space that is available, it's the cafeteria overflow for those people who may have known what it was before, it's room 108, it was the old school store, and it's directly across from the school cafeteria, it's a great space, it has all the infrastructure that, in terms of electrical, that would support the, support the grow racks. Additionally, our, previously, we had a completely different plan for this space, however, we found out or recognized that it was a great way to merge the, the previous plan with the farm that we now have in the high school. So this next slide is just a quick, it's, it's, the, this is a quick plan of what the farm or that space will look like later. The, the good thing about it, we are, we have tried or experimented the past two or three weeks with the concept of having a farm as well as a cafeteria dining space in, in that old space. We tried, we have pop-up restaurants that we have, and I'm sure one of these days, or you might be hearing about these pop-up restaurants that we have, where every week we engage local vendors, they come in, they work with us to identify a product, and it has to be a local product. It has to match our sustainability policies, and it has to have our district and food service vision. We've had a number of restaurants that came, we had about three pop-ups before, but we hope to have both the grow racks and the pop-up restaurant, where students can come in, dine, talk to the vendors, it's kind of merging both, both concepts together, we find that dining on the farm is what, is true farm to school or true seed to table. The very food that they're seeing growing are the, is the very food that it will end up on their trays. So as I said, we have a great concept, we've tried it, students will have an opportunity to dine in the farm. We've had a number of local vendors, as always, I have to sprinkle some Jamaican in there, and we had a Jamaican jerk day, which was very successful. We, these are all local vendors that we've engaged and enticed. The beauty of this is that students now have an additional service area or additional lunch space that we, we thought are, is very helpful in minimizing the long lines that we experience with the smaller kitchen, and especially with the increase in participation at the high school. This concept also increases, I found students, so when, if students are able to engage with the food that they're, they're eating and understand and have some connection to the food, then we, we recognize that participation does increase. So we have gone through three pop- So we have gone through three pop-ups. We will continue to do these as we go through the school year. Um, I think that's most of it. I want to also say thank you to all our community, our farm-to-school team. They are non-wavering. They're always available. We are grateful for the support. We will continue to improve. We do have opportunities for volunteers or, or community members, students to volunteers to volunteer during the planting sessions or during the, during harvesting. I, I know Rebecca is on. Roger was not here. Rebecca is a long time. Rebecca just joined us a few months ago. From, as a, as a, a first-time member or, or an initial member of the farm-to-school program or the farm-to-school initiative, it's great to recognize and be able to see what that specific position has done to helping us achieve some of these, these initiatives. So we're grateful that we now have a sustainability coordinator on our, our, our team. We are, we think that it, it was very helpful to have that position to help bring these initiatives to life. Yeah, I think that's, that's it for, for, for now.
Thank you very much for that explanation. It's very exciting work that's being done with food services and with the farm. And thank you for the illustrative pictures as well. Any questions or comments from school committee members? Brian?
Thanks Sasha. This was great. I had a question about the pop-up kitchens. Are the meals that are served there reimbursement-eligible as well?
Yes, they are all reimbursable meals.
Oh, that's great. Anyway, that was just one little thing. There's so much. Yeah, right, right. Free to the students reimbursable by the state government. District. Yeah, that's wonderful. And I think that's great. And I'm going to email you with the name of a local restaurant that I think would be a great pop-up. So.
Stephen?
Just want to say, I think that was great. I, someone who got to go with you to one of the original farm-to-school visits. That was totally inspirational then. It's great to see what this has turned into. For those people who don't know, also our food services coordinator Rebecca was also a result of a grant that Sasha entrepreneurially started. So it's just amazing, the combination of vision and entrepreneurship that you brought to this role. So bravo.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Dr. Hillary?
With that, Ms. Palmer, we would like to present the Spotlight on Excellence to the BHS Indoor Farm and PSB Food Services Department with gratitude for spearheading this innovative program, providing students with experiential learning opportunities which foster sustainable solutions and lasting change. Congratulations to you.
All right, we will now go to update on, sorry? All right, we can go back to the student report now. Ms. Clavis, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very sorry for the interruption and the technological delay. Just like to put that out there, but I do have my video and I do think that Headmaster Myers' remarks at the end are pretty important to see. So, yes.
Like the celebration was fun though. Like I feel like, like a lot of people seemed to be enjoying themselves when I saw like sat, like all the clubs were together. Everyone seemed happy. There was music playing. So yeah, I think we do this again next year. We should definitely continue including the party. That was great. 10 out of 10.
I'm pretty sure the main part I loved about Doors this year was like everybody had a different story to tell, you know? Everybody was so powerful and like so like passionate about what they wanted to talk about. And it's like to be able to sit there and watch it like grow and happen. I really liked that.
Well, I always liked the student speakers. It's definitely good to hear a variety of voices.
A block lesson I thought was really good. You know, redlining, community organizing are both like really important things that don't really get touched on enough when we talk about like systemic racism. And then as always, the sharing our stories assembly is just incredible. Like the courage that students have to just go up there and say stuff. It's just.
It shouldn't, we shouldn't place so much emphasis on one day, you know? We should be able to point at multiple things that happen like without throughout the school year in the curriculum and not just say, oh, we invited like some people to speak during one day in December and you know, that's the extent of us being, you know, woke and anti-racist.
As we keep trying to work towards, you know, racial equity and/or equality in this school, that we sort of expand the realm of doors from like lessons and people speaking to more actionable stuff, at least within our school community. Also, I've noticed that the sharing our stories assembly, students, the administration really, I don't want to say appreciates, but is very what's, what's the word? Very open to hearing criticisms about mistakes that they've made in the past. But when there are things that they aren't doing in the present, that then becomes an issue. So I think it's really important for future doors and for the school community completely that the administration is much more transparent about what they're doing and also actually says things about things going on in the world, you know, that actually supports the school.
Definitely. And even though that's the case, why do you think we should still keep having programming like Doors?
Because I think that for all of its flaws, Brooklyn High School without Doors is a worse place. Even if we are just talking about racism and not actually solving it, education is always the first step. So I mean, I can do nothing but hope that after Doors, people go on in their lives to actually apply the things that they've learned through Doors.
We also got like a lot of time to really celebrate and like to really reconcile with each other. And it's like, it's good, but I also feel like maybe time management would have been better. Other than that, I really like how Doors was done this year. A lot of support from a lot of different teachers. You're free to go to them, email them whenever. They're always available. And yeah, I just liked how Doors was handled this time.
Our Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity is an incredibly important event that we undertake each year and that takes a lot of bravery for students and staff to engage both as speakers and participants. I'm certainly mindful that some in our community were really hurt by some aspects of the Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity. What's important to emphasize in this context is we are trying to find ways to listen to stakeholders in our community who feel hurt or unsupported. And that includes hearing from parents, guardians and caregivers, hearing from staff and having staff have opportunities to talk with one another and students as well. Because we need to find a way, as hard as it seems right now, to restore our community, our sense of community, restore shared trust and feel as though we are healing.
I, I think some people might be arguing that the administration has been saying all this since October. It's December now. And arguably, those supportive measures that we want to be implemented haven't necessarily been implemented, you know? So, so why, why the delay? Why, why, why is it taking so long to not only implement these, these measures to support Muslim students and Palestinian students and also Jewish and Israeli students?
I think, I think we have tried to listen to what students need, provide supports. And also in some ways have probably disagreed about what exactly is needed and what we're able to provide. So I think students and staff would benefit from further guidance on protected speech and hate speech. And that has been challenging for us to develop and share. We have looked at our advisory blocks and made some decisions about how we thought we could support students within advisory. And I think there's certainly disagreement around that. And we need to think about other ways to give students space to be in community, whether that is Jewish and Israeli students, Arab and Muslim students.
Yeah. To, to all the parents and to all the students out there who, who feel angry or ignored or just unheard for one reason or another, what would you like to communicate to them?
We care unequivocally about every student. I care as the principal of Brookline High School. And I know my staff cares about every student at Brookline High School. And there is a tremendous amount of polarization right now and mistrust. And that makes it very hard for people who might feel wounded or scared to ask for the help that they need. And I would still try to do whatever I can in my position and in my work to try to move towards a climate and a culture where people are telling us things that help us act in support of them.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you all so much and have a good night.
Did anyone have any questions for Ms. Clavis? Stephen?
Thank you Laura. That was, that was really illuminating. Dr. Gillery, so at the end of Head of School Myers' remarks, he said he would be interested in further guidance on, on hate speech. That's, that's definitely the first I've heard from BHS on that. Can you tell us more about what kind of guidance might be useful to BHS?
Sure thing. So actually today, a few of us participated in a national seminar with the Secretary of Education, Cardona, who the department has actually developed a number of resources that they're sharing out with schools that we think were going to be beneficial for us. So we're going to be digging into those and getting those out to schools. That is very important to have the national perspective on that. Because again, to try to identify those things specifically for our local and, and as Head of School Myers said, the importance of listening and engaging in listening sessions. I know a number of those items are going to be coming up as well. But this is the, the platform that we've needed and I think Dr. Fortuna is on also. We've also looked at contracting with facing history in ourselves to also provide some additional resources there. What we wanted to do is move beyond our own created resources in this venue, but to actually get support from those that have expertise or experience with that. And that's what the Secretary of Education actually talked about, having resources come from communities or groups that are have, are vetted and experienced with developing these types of things. So we look forward to getting, reviewing those and getting those out.
That's great. Are there any decisions that, that either BHS or that the administration would be, are looking to the school community to make that would be helpful in the shortest term?
Not at this time. I think we're working with, once we get those resources from the secretary's office, we'll be reviewing those as well as with our internal team here and getting those disseminated. And getting folks, getting folks exposed to them as well, not just sending them out, but actually getting folks to work through them.
Thanks very much.
Anyone else? All right, then we will move into public comment. And our, just as a reminder, speakers have three minutes. There's going to be a timer. That was part of the presentation.
Superintendent's report? Thanks. Linus, did I hear you say that there'll be a future presentation on absenteeism?
Yes.
Okay. When we do that, is it possible to have that presentation address the disparate levels of absenteeism by building?
Yeah, I mean, that's, so, yes.
I saw the data and it's very disparate and not just high school versus K8, but across the K8s.
Across the K8s. And that's what we've been looking at. The data right now is very early. On, so for example, if, you know, if at day one, first day of school, so let me say it this way, chronic absenteeism is measured over the course of the school year. There are 180 days in the school year. And to be counted as chronically absent, you have to hit the 10% threshold. So that means 18 days out of the school year. So for example, if on day one, you missed the first day of school, by definition, you're chronically absent. So at this juncture in the year, being less than the 100-day mark or less than 90, even in this case, a small number could actually have you as chronically.
But is this data reported this year for last year? Isn't it, isn't it on a time delay? It can't be real, in real time, is it, from the state?
No, I'm talking about, we're looking at our data.
Oh, you're looking at your current data. I see. Okay, okay. Thank you. But anyway, it would be great to understand the SE-reported data on that. And I have another question that I'll ask you later. Thank you.
Anyone else with questions or comments regarding the superintendent's report? All right. So now we will move into public comment. And as a reminder, each speaker will have three minutes. You will be timed. And let's begin. So first, we have Ruvie Kitov.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can, yes.
All right. Thank you. My name is Ruvie Kitov. I'm the parent of a senior at Brookline High School. For those that are unaware, Brookline High School allowed the Jewish Student Union and the Muslim Student Association to meet in affinity spaces for four weeks following the massacre of October 7th during advisory block time. Over 100 students participated in the Jewish Student Union each week. After four weeks, those affinity spaces were taken away. The students were very, very upset and are still very upset about this decision. I've asked Anthony Mayer, the head of Brookline's High School over email, to reinstate the affinity spaces and he replied that they have staffing challenges. I've seen Anthony Mayer move things forward when he sets his mind to it. I'm sure those challenges could be resolved. It seems that some people in school leadership would like to go back to business as usual. But this war is not over. Anti-Semitism is everywhere and continuing to rise. Jewish students are afraid and Jewish teachers are afraid. Last week, a student spoke at the Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity. And instead of speaking about racial reform, chose to compare the Israeli Defense Forces to war crimes and acts of genocide perpetrated by Serbian forces. While I recognize the suffering of the Palestinian people, the students' portrayal of Gaza both is factually incorrect and terribly misguided. But what is worse is that until today, no one corrected the student, including faculty speakers that followed him. And nothing, so far as I know, has been shared with the student body, refuting the claims that were made. The fact that this speech was allowed to proceed and the silence of school leadership following the speech until today made many Jewish students and teachers feel that the double standards we saw exhibited by the presidents of Harvard, MIT and Penn may exist at Brookline High School as well. And they are afraid that within this atmosphere, the bullying and hate speech we see on college campuses could take place at Brookline High School as well. We have Jewish students whose teachers are forbidden from saying anything about the war and whose peers in school are sharing daily pro-Hamas propaganda. And when Jewish students and teachers found a source of strength in each other and the Jewish community within the affinity spaces, that opportunity was taken away due to resources and curriculum. Multiple faculty members volunteered and joined the Jewish Student Union. And the same advisory block content can be shared in the affinity space by a faculty member without any curriculum loss. There's a critical need for the affinity spaces for the Jewish students, at least for the next few months. While the level of antisemitism- for the next few months, while the level of anti-Semitism around us is so high. I'm asking a high school once again to bring back the affinity spaces during the advisory block. They are more important now than ever before. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kitov. Next, we have Rafai Ali.
I'm here today to represent the Muslim Students Association at Brookline High School. We are a collection of Muslim students at BHS who aim to support each other and build alliances within the school. The MSA would like to see channels for discourse and constructive dialogue open in the school for students to engage in and build educated and informed opinions. Such channels would be moderated by teachers or students to keep discussion civil and polite while still giving students the ability to voice their opinions and learn from each other. The MSA has seen a complete lack of discourse around the Israel-Palestine conflict, and we urge the school to open channels for discourse and positive constructive discussion. After the doors event, a student was cautioned for talking about what is happening in Gaza. Preventing students and teachers from actively discussing what is happening in Palestine is antithetical to the mission of the school. We cannot host a Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity without discussing what is happening in Gaza. To do so is to fail to create a safe environment for Arab and Muslim students. This is a story that has dominated the media and the world around us, and yet students are effectively barred from engaging with it. Two days ago, the UN General Assembly voted on enacting a ceasefire in Gaza. The outcome was 153 countries in favor and 10 countries against. There are 1.5 million people trapped in Gaza, many of them in shelters and refugee camps. Since the Israeli government commenced its siege, the death toll has reached over 18,000. 6,000 of these deaths are children. This is more than the number of students in the Brookline school system. 90% of Gaza's population has been displaced. The bombing and ground assault of Gaza has been deemed an ethnic cleansing by numerous human rights organizations, including the Human Rights Watch and Amnesty International. Even in the face of all of this, we see people call for more, more bloodshed, more death, and more destruction. We, as the Muslim Students Association, have lived in and have friends, family, traditions, and roots in Morocco, Pakistan, Egypt, India, Kuwait, Iraq, and most notably for this moment, Palestine. Politics and human rights in these parts of the world are important to us and are as important for conversation as those in countries in Europe and the Americas. Muslims feel constant discomfort as we feel the need to speak out but are silenced by the fear of being rejected by our friends and community. And Israeli supporters may feel this discomfort as well. But just because a conversation induces discomfort doesn't make it hateful. We must go to a place of discomfort in order to reach a place of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ali. Next, we have Ms. Marina Radueva.
My name is Marina. I live in Brookline, K8. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. I stand before you not as a lawyer, but as a person who holds dear the profound freedom to speak. Many years ago, I arrived in the United States. They promised the land of the free, the home of the brave. Tears streamed down my face as I gazed at the Statue of Liberty in New York City, memories of silenced voices left behind haunting my every step. Born and raised in Soviet Russia, I learned the true value of free speech. By day, I was a model, model student with a red tie singing praises to the Communist Party. By night, my siblings and I delved into banned books by Soviet dissidents like Solzhenitsyn and Artur Khanov. I may have been very young to fully grasp the content, but I understood the danger they posed. Having such books could lead to decades of imprisonment for my parents and uncertainty for us in an orphanage. Back then, we wanted nothing but dignity of lives with freedom of choice, speech, and belief. But I learned early on to keep my thoughts and feelings hidden, unknowingly preparing for a future day of reckoning. As history unfolded, the seemingly invincible Soviet regime collapsed, liberating people yearning for truth and justice. However, a new struggle emerged in the form of a newborn democratic Russia plunging my homeland into war. Fast forward, and I was gazing at the French lady holding the book and the torch as a newly naturalized US. Here in the United States, freedom of speech may be taken for granted, but its cost should never be forgotten. Some may attempt to suspend these freedoms for a supposed greater good, but impact often results in a greater evil. Silencing voices leads to the erosion of our democratic values. Do we want our children to experience the oppressive regime of Soviet Russia? No. What we want for them is to have the ability to express themselves, share their life experiences, engage in open dialogue, learn history, debate what is morally right, and stand tall and proud of whom they are, something that we are proudly claimed to do in this country. I share my story not to impress but to emphasize the significance of free speech and why I stand for it. And I believe if you have a just cause, it becomes duty to defend it with a powerful word of truth.
Thank you, Ms. Radueva. Next, we have Ms. Hajar Dalshad.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hajar Dalshad. First, I'd like to start by wishing all of our Jewish neighbors a happy Hanukkah and hope that this season will bring many blessings to all of us and bring peace to the world. As many have mentioned, there was some conflict around the Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity event at the high school. I just want to point out that we all chose to enroll our children in the public schools of Brookline for a reason. And that's because we want them to learn new things, and we are not here to indoctrinate our children. If we would like to indoctrinate our children, we could enroll them in parochial schools, religious schools, or private schools that have very set agendas. We would know what they are and we would subscribe to them. But we have all made the choice to have our children attend public school so that they can be exposed to other viewpoints, not just the viewpoints of their parents or their grandparents or where they come from. I, for one, am not scared of that. I would like them to learn new things. Maybe they'll teach me a thing or two. We have to acknowledge that for Muslim and Arab children going to school in Brookline in the last 69 days of this war, life has been extremely difficult. Not only do they know about the October 7th attacks, which were incredibly tragic, but they know about all the things that followed. They are hearing of a death toll of over 18,000. No one actually can even keep track because so many people are buried under the rubble. The number of children who have been killed, and let's all at least assume that children are innocent, is higher than the entire enrollment of the public schools of Brookline. Imagine that every single child in Brookline were to die. They have to carry that weight around with them every day. Those children have names like theirs and they look like them. They have to think about three boys in Vermont who are maybe a year or two older than most of these kids who were shot a couple of weeks ago, and one of them is paralyzed. They have to carry all this weight around with them all day, every day, take exams, write papers, play sports, and act like life is normal. But life is not normal for them, and it is not normal for their Jewish kids as well. But they're not allowed to talk about it. This is very troubling. They can't talk about it. How can they process? Let's give them some guidelines. Let's give them some guidelines on how to have this conversation without being labeled as Hamas supporters or, as other people have already mentioned, propaganda. It's very sad because students can't even air their thoughts and feelings in school without being labeled and without being accused and being attacked. This is their future and this is their world. Our parents' generation and ours have obviously made a mess. Why don't we let the kids have a conversation? Maybe they can fix it.
Thank you, Ms. Dalshad. Next, we have Mr. Amir Grinstein.
Three minutes, I have three hats that I need to disclose. So I'm a parent, first, in Brookline, graduate from BHS, sophomore at BHS, and the youngest kid at Ridley School. I'm a Northeastern University professor, gonna talk mostly about that. But I'm also, and this is, I can connect with my Muslim colleagues in the room, established a nonprofit that brings Israelis and Palestinians to work together on startups, okay? But I'm gonna focus here on my Northeastern experience and share some things that we might learn at the Brookline school system. So how come at Northeastern, there's almost no anti-Semitic or anti-Israeli activity and sentiment? That's an interesting question. You talk about the campuses, right, all over the country? So a few things I want to share with you. First of all, the leadership. Leadership, super important. Since October 7, the horrific attacks, the university took an unequivocally denounced the massacre on the one hand, but also continued to be very clear about the distinction between hate speech and valid policy criticism. Second, noteworthy, our students at Northeastern at least, very pragmatic. They came to school to pursue knowledge, prepare for their careers, solve problems, not being part of a political battlefield. Third, the university very quickly approved and funded a new Jewish affinity group that wasn't existed before the war. We talked about affinity spaces, right? This means that the university realized that its Jewish employees are protected minority. Fourth, the university realized that its DEI training does not include at all anti-Semitism. This is now changing. Fifth, there have been multiple public events in which dialogue about the complex reality took place. And there are discussions, granted at times more formal and cold, between opposing faculty groups on campus. Open lines of communication are important. Finally, in many of our classes at Northeastern, we advocate for, one, critical thinking. We encourage our students to not accept information at face value. Two, paradoxical mindset. We teach them that realities are typically more complicated and not only black or white. For example, you can be both pro-Israel and pro-Palestine and at the same time, anti-Hamas. This should not be positioned as an either-or issue. We also fight the tyranny of council culture and the culture of preferred speech when students will only express popular trending views. The Brookline public school system should strive to have our teacher and students apply these three principles: critical thinking, paradoxical mindset, and avoiding council or fighting council culture. And the last thing I'll say, this is a huge learning opportunity for us in Brookline. Learning from educational experts, positive examples, being adaptable, being collaborative, and training teachers, staff, and administrators seems to me as key to our success.
Thank you, Mr. Grinstein. Next, we have Ms. Donna Perry.
Hi, good evening. I'm very pleased to follow Amir because I actually have prepared remarks, but I think I'm gonna veer off of them for a minute and say that I'm really heartbroken sometimes when I come into this room and there's this sense of like either/or, and I'm not really sure where it comes from. I have a lot of room in my heart for a lot of the stories that I hear from my friends who are Muslim and tell me about what their kids have to go through in school. And that doesn't take away from any of the pain or the experience that the Jewish and Israeli students are feeling when they're in their classrooms. And I hope that we can start speaking differently and start acknowledging that there is unfortunately enough room in this world, enough suffering to go around, that one does not negate the other. We say this a lot, but it's true. Our kids are listening, and they're gonna learn from what happens in the space, what happens near conversations at home, how you treat one another. So, yeah, that's what's important to me. I will just share one tiny thing that I had written out. It was a quote that I was gonna close with that a friend recently shared on Facebook. It's by Rabbi David Wapley, and I think it's actually apropos in a different way than what I had imagined. Rabbi Wapley often tells the story of a man who stood before God, his heart breaking from the pain and injustice in the world. "Dear God," he cried out, "look at all the suffering and the anguish and distress in the world. Why don't you send help?" God responded, "I did send help. I sent you."
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Next, we have Akiva Leibowitz.
Hi, thank you. I'm a parent of one alumnus and two current students at high school. And I want to share a letter I wrote to the school principal, Mr. Mayer, the day following the Day of Social Reform recognition. "On these awful days full of violence and destruction, we find some consolation in writing to you about what we have seen happening at BHS yesterday and has reclaimed some of our faith in humanity. The talk given on the Day of Racial Reform by one of your students, talking about the possibility of a harmonious garden of diversity, where all faiths, ethnicities, races, genders, and nationalities have a place, was a courageous demonstration of humanism and deep concern for the sanctity of life. It was an ultimate expression of strife for racial and social justice, one which does not only acknowledge remote historic injustices but takes the courage to confront injustices occurring in front of our eyes. These very days, linking past with present, looking forward to a better future, allowing our children to be engaged, caring citizens of this world. We are proud to be parents of Idore Itamar Hadass at a school which upholds these values. We know that there may be a group of parents who are expressing their dismay, attempting to curb the extent of free speech and legitimacy of our students to stand up in front of moral injustices as they themselves perceive in this world, particularly if it may be critical of certain governmental policies. While they are entitled to opinions, they do not represent the entire corpus of BHS parents. We too come from the south of Israel, frequented by missile attacks. Nevertheless, we acknowledge that the endless cycle of violence and revenge will lead our world nowhere but catastrophe. An eye for an eye leaves us all blind. The tragic massacre of October 7th, which has been condemned by leaders of the Brookline school system and anyone with a beating heart and viable soul, by no means justifies the horrors that are being inflicted daily on the innocent civilians of Gaza and Palestinians in the occupied West Bank, not in our name. We feel it as important as Israeli-American Jews to express our support of any call to end the violence, cease the fire, and respect the value of human life everywhere and protect the right of students to call out perpetrators of such violence or discrimination, no matter what their nationality is. Our sons return from school proud to be part of the BHS community. We hope that you feel empowered to continue leading the school courageously, encouraging our students to continue working hard towards making this world a better place for all."
Thank you, Ms. Leibowitz. Next, we have Ms. Sharon Mishkin.
Hi, my name is Sharon Mishkin. I'm a resident of Brookline and have two children who attend BHS. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. On October 7th, I woke up in Tel Aviv to sirens. Rockets were being fired into all of Israel. Thousands of Hamas terrorists stormed Israel for the sole purpose of massacring innocent civilians, babies, children, women, men, the elderly, Jewish, Muslims, Israeli Arabs, foreigners, it didn't matter. This young BHS student talked about the mixed garden. Israel is a mixed garden of everyone I just mentioned. And they killed them all, proudly recording their atrocities, which they followed from Emmanuel. 1,400 innocent people were murdered that day, and 243 innocent people were killed. and 243 innocent people were kidnapped and taken to Gaza. Like any nation, Israel has a right to exist and therefore a right to defend herself. So when this BHS student raised the issue of Palestinian death, he was not wrong, but the blame solely lies on Hamas. Hamas terrorists started that war that Israel did not seek, knowing that Israel would defend herself. Inexplicably, there was no mention of the hostages that had been taken and were still being kept. It is a responsibility of the educators at BHS to thoughtfully assess any situation that could make their students feel unsafe. There is no room for speech that breeds hate, and that is exactly what happened. This wouldn't have been the case with any other minority. All I ask is that we get the same support that any minority would receive. All students should feel safe at BHS. I'm not suggesting that this student be suspended or expelled. He was permitted to continue his anti-Israel implications for almost a minute. He should have been stopped, but clearly there's an urgent need for education right now. The first step is for BHS to adopt the IHRA definition of antisemitism. Everyone at the school must be clear on speech that is threatening to Jews, claiming there is a genocide in Gaza is antisemitic and false. Joseph Hadad, a proud Arab who's Israeli, posted today, "My country, the only Jewish country in the world and the only democratic country in the Middle East, just released six terrorists in order to bring back Ayisha and Bilal, both of whom are Arab Muslims who were kidnapped by the terrorist organization Hamas ISIS. Israel protects all its citizens. I urge the educators in this room to understand that this is not an Israeli-Palestinian conflict, it's a battle between humanity and evil. It saddens my heart that our children not only witness October 7th, but they may experience personal losses. On October 7th, my cousin was shot and murdered by Hamas terrorists while she was driving. Loss of innocent civilian life is a tragedy, period. But we must understand who's to blame. We all depend on the educators at BHS." Jewish and Israeli students deserve a minimum to feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mishkin. Next, we have Ms. Donna Ramon.
Good evening. My name is Donna. I'm a resident, a parent, and an educator. For over a decade, I've been helping, volunteering, assisting our most vulnerable residents in Brookline. I've dedicated these years helping families with special needs. For the past two and a half months, me and my fellow Jewish residents have been vulnerable and in need of help. In addition to rampant Jewish hatred outbursts since October 7th throughout the country, it is not the first time that we have been seeing antisemitism here in our hometown. Swastika at BHS, for example, December 2016, May 2019, January 22, March 22, and I can go on and on. How would you feel walking to school and seeing a symbol that means, "We want you dead"? Yet, there has been no response, no help, no compassion, just deafening silence. I strongly advise you to read the poem by Martin Neumler, "First They Came," and I brought a copy to share with you. I expected much more from you. Brookline has been known for standing against hatred: Islamophobia, African-American hate, Asian hate, LGBTQ hate. I hold you accountable for not taking a firm stand to fight against Jew hatred. I cannot bear the false niceties anymore. We are in a grave situation. The Jew hatred is the canary in the mine. History has taught us all too clearly that swastikas and the like lead to burning books, lead to burning people. Silence is complicity. Your silence is complicity. It is in your hands as representatives of education to educate, educate teachers and students. I hold you accountable, and I call you for action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramon. Next, we have Mr. Colin Stokes.
Good evening. My name is Colin Stokes. I'm a parent of a BHS grad and a current first year. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 7. Thank you all for your service on the school committee. Racial justice is really important to me and my family. We've had incredible good fortune with the teachers and leaders that we've had at Pierce, a community full of dozens of languages and backgrounds. My younger child had four teachers of color and two black principals helping to establish that diversity is the normal state of the world. And these experiences have made it clear to me it is impossible to have excellence without equity. So equity is excellence. And I fully support the ongoing prioritization of diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice in all aspects of our education. And I know that this doesn't happen by accident. Leaders, including yourselves, have made decisions over decades to create the experiences that my kids have had, and there's plenty more work to do. Most of the teachers and principals that I just mentioned aren't at Pierce anymore. And you know better than I that it hasn't been a smooth or straight line. The cultural winds change, and sometimes you have to push just to stay in the same place. What keeps the momentum going is partly the people, but it's also the policies and things like what incentives are there for teachers to build their cultural competence? What accountability is there when problems arise? What processes are in place to slow us down and do the extra work so that we can't take the shortcuts that let in bias or preserve exclusion? So the district's strategic plan, that is new, plays a really crucial role in guiding the policies and the systems to build on the existing equity work and strengthen it for the future. And I especially want to highlight investing in the capacity of the Office for Educational Equity. That function will be essential to keep this lens on everything else. And the proposal to implement a comprehensive equity audit is actually overdue. I've seen neighboring districts like Needham do this several years ago, and it had a powerful impact. It's impossible to remove barriers we haven't identified or to expand great practices that we don't know exist. And many inequities grow in the spaces between, in a gap between funding and policy, or between intentions and consequences. And our children fall through these gaps, and we struggle to understand why, because we operate in our silos. So only a complete assessment can expose those misalignments, and it's well worth the cost when we make adjustments to our systems that allow even more students to develop their fullest potential. Finally, I'd love to catch up with the work of your DEIJ Subcommittee, which I understand has not met for a while. I think with Claire Galloway Jones and Christina Hernandez on board and bringing their extensive experience and insight, this group can do so much work on the systemic level to make our schools better and better for more and more children. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Mr. Omer Dogan.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. My name is Omer, and my wife and I have three children and PSB. I'm a computer science guy, and I've had the privilege of building and managing several organizations and thousands of employees, many of whom are young. I want to take this opportunity to humbly share something I've learned over the years that is relevant for all of us. I believe that many of you are familiar with the famous quote by Peter Doke, "Culture is strategy for breakfast." And we all put a massive effort into crafting and implementing a culture. The core of culture is values. There are obviously a few essential ones. A value that I think is very important is the passion to knowledge. This entails a collective commitment for continuous learning and understanding. For instance, we insist that employees will have a comprehensive understanding of the customers before engaging with them, specifically to deeply understand their history, culture, values, needs, and much more, before any interaction. I believe what I'm trying to say is clear by now, but I will state the relevance of this example for our current situation more directly. If teachers are meant to teach students, they should first understand them, their history, culture, hopes and dreams, as well as their fears. When it comes to Jewish and Israeli students these days, they should also understand what is happening right now to their families and friends. When you make an effort to understand, you also show that you care. You also show that you care. This is the fundamental rule of education, the fundamental rule of educators. And we are all educators. We educate our kids, students, and employees. We must have a personal passion for knowledge and convey this passion to those we influence, steering them away from settling for superficial information in short TikTok clips. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dogan. Next, we have Ms. Ann Karen.
Hello, thank you. My name is Ann Karen. I'm verbally challenged as English is not my first language, and I appreciate your patience with me. I'm a Jewish, I'm Israeli, I'm a French citizen, as well as I'm a clinician with over 24 years of providing individual and group psychotherapy training in the field of trauma and loss. I served as a mental health officer in the Israeli army, where I also was a head of the North Country Clinic for Victims of Sexual Assault and Violence. I was an active member of the Israel Professional Team for Emergency and Disaster Intervention, and I worked with veterans, ex-captives, and despots coping with chronic PTSD in a variety of setting and organizations throughout the years. Since moving to the U.S., Brookline, Massachusetts, with Eras, my husband, and the kids, 10 years ago, I completed my doctorate in clinical psychology. And above all, I'm a mother of three, who are currently students in the public school of Brookline, currently in elementary, middle school, and a high school. Our kids, any kids, all students, coming to school with their solution. Their behavior is their solution, not their problem. As a student, when a student changed his speech because he knew that the speech, if he would apply that, wouldn't be approved, and he changed it at the last moment, that's his solution. When one of our child going to the toilet to cry, when she filled with emotion, hearing that speech, this is her solution. When other girls, other students, when they find out later in a very safe space, which is not in school, and I sadly says, "which is not in school", when they find a very far safe space to speak about what happened in high school, and they cry and they share their feelings, this is their solution, to do it far away. And to cry and try to pretend in school that they didn't cry because they're fear, they are afraid, they are worried to be judged by others and biased towards them, that they don't care about the Palestinians suffer if they feel the way they feel because they scared, not from the content of what he said. They know to listen to other opinion. You teach them that. We teach them that together. But it's scary for them to have someone finally talking about it. It's scary for them that it's tired to be talked, but the grown-up are keep silence. For them, they internalize the taboo in school that talking about their reality is not allowed. Sadly, they internalize that message. Okay, in this ecologic environment, when our kids learn and develop, they internalize that it's unsafe, that it's dangerous to speak. The gap between their reality, who experienced a horrible terror attack by Hamas, but that have never been mentioned and acknowledged by the grown-up of Brookline educator loudly in front of them, only very confusing messages, very vague. I urge you, how dare anyone judge our student because they want to express the feeling, because they have thoughts, they have feelings, they have opinion? How school become unsafe space? When in a place where we don't talk, it become dangerous? When there is no democracy for feelings and feelings being compressed inside, it come out in action, in acting out, usually uncontrolled and very harmful and dangerous. Our kids experience earthquake. A very stable thing and safe earth have just slipped under their legs. It's not enough to send them to the counselors. It's not enough to send them to the guidance counselors and for therapy. They need to hear you saying, "You are behaving normal. You are reacting normal to an abnormal situation." This is the time to be there for them. Do not do that split. Do not split between the community here. We have gold here. We live together. We cannot do that in the Middle East. I urge you, this committee and all staff of the education of our kids, please tell them in one united voice that this is real, that this is their reality, that it's really happened, that it is terror and this is crime against human being, any human being. Do act, don't talk, and please do it quick.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Next, we go to Ms. Yael Alkali.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
You can.
So, dear school committee, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today regarding the concerns surging antisemitism within our community and public schools. I urge you, the Brookline Public School Committee and leadership, to take an action, to take concrete steps and measures, endorse the IHRA definition of antisemitism. To date, over 850 people signed a petition, mandated Brookline Public School to endorse the definition of antisemitism. Second, as we heard today, there is a lack of understanding from educator of the situation. Please take steps to provide training for educators, enforce manager training programs and professional development for our school leadership, teachers, and staff to effectively recognize and respond to antisemitic incidents, fostering a secure and inclusive learning environment for all, including for Brookline Public School Jewish staff and students. Third, implement comprehensive education program. Provide educational initiatives that promote awareness, understanding, and tolerance of diverse cultures and religions with a specific focus on combating antisemitism. Revise the existing DEI programs and training to ensure the inclusivity and safety of all, including Jewish staff and students. Fourth, collaborate with community organizations. Establish robust collaboration with community organization leaders to jointly strategize for combating antisemitism, presenting a united front against hatred. And then lastly, as we heard today, we need and we ask you to provide affinity spaces for our Jewish students, recognize and address the necessity for spaces catering to the needs of Jewish students during these difficult times. I urge you again, over two months after October 7th, horrible massacre by Hamas terrorist organization, to take action, to listen to the community, to acknowledge the need to first combat antisemitism, first to provide a safe space for the Jewish community. Take action today, never again is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alkali. Next, we will go to Ms. Abby Erdman. Could you unmute, Ms. Erdman, and turn on your camera?
Excuse me. Hi, pardon me. Can you hear me?
You can.
But you can't see me, huh? Apologies. Hi.
There you go.
Good evening, school committee friends, administrators, parents, teachers, residents, and to all of you who have spoken tonight, it's been incredibly moving. So thank you for those speeches. I speak from home tonight, but I speak from my heart and from my love for Brookline. I've been a teacher and a community activist in Brookline for 50 years. I'm not ignoring the dire situation in the Middle East. I'm built- I'm not ignoring the dire situation in the Middle East. I'm building on Colin's speech. I speak with urgency, still reeling from the power of Janay's letter of resignation from her position as Director of Equity. Really, her call to action, a call I don't think ever was officially acknowledged. In her letter, she pointed out a direction for all of us, urging us to shift the work of equity from a two-person office required to quote "fix entrenched problems people of color did not create" and instead quote "to work, work that includes thoughtful, reflective involvement." Ending systemic racism must be the work we all do, especially those of us who are white. It must be undertaken by every person in the school system and in the community. All means all. We must all ask, what can we do? What can I do? So here's something we can all do. Tonight, I speak in favor of a proposal that is the happy convergence of three different and broad constituencies, teachers, parents, and the Office of Educational Equity. The teachers are 17 strong, gathered in a new organization called Brave Adults, brave standing for Brookline racial activists valuing equity, that works alongside Brave, a student coalition connecting different stakeholders in Brookline with student activists, and CARE, the Coalition for Anti-Racist Education, composed of parents working in their schools, in their children's schools, and coming together monthly to collaborate. All are in favor of this proposal. So this proposal, created and named by Lindsay Davis and Steph Hunt, brilliant teachers at the high school, but simultaneously developed in other spaces, calls for Brookline to establish an equity collaboration team in each of the elementary schools and the high school. The team of two teachers would be given time during the day, not after or before school or in addition to all they do, and we heard over and over again tonight, the need for teachers to be in affinity spaces and to be available to support children and high school students in crisis, to proactively and effectively handle issues and problems and solution around racism that emerge on sight. For who better to handle that work of anti-racism than the teachers trained, perhaps by seed, who know the culture and the people involved? Handled in this way, issues can be much more gently and deeply resolved. School committee friends and administrators, you have funded many beautiful new schools in Brookline. Now it's time to fund a proposal where the work of equity is shared. I'll end by quoting Claire Galloway Jones, who points out, "Equity is the basement and the canopy and the roof and everything in between." Now let's fund this proposal to build an equity team for the good of all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Erdman. Next, we go to Naveen Tahir.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Yes?
We do, yes. Go right ahead.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Naveen. My daughter is a junior in VHS. I love what many have already said before me, calling for supporting all the kids in the Brookline school system. I met some of you last week, I'm sorry, in the last meeting where I discussed how othering and preventing discussion leads to lack of compassion and violence, specifically what we're seeing now nationally and also locally here in Brookline against Arabs and Muslim. As an example, most recently in messages of hate displayed in one of our local parks towards Palestine. I'm here again tonight to comment on the aftermath of the Day of Racial Reform at VHS, which many have brought up already. I understand from tonight and from previous conversations that many families found the need to express significant anger towards one of the kids' messages where they shared their story and learnings. My assumption is that it caused discomfort because that student recommended others question assumptions and what they've known, and think of possibilities of movement towards better harmony and change. Regardless of your opinion on the actual story, there was one main truth. It was the student's subjective experience and observation, and one that he was sharing in a day he was supposed to share, his own experiences and observations. And what's becoming, what is really becoming of our school and our town and by extension our world, since we're seeing this in censorship all around us, if you can't really tell your story, and when you can't discuss history, and when having any commentary on Israel's government, for example, is automatically framed as an antisemitic attack. And this is extremely relevant, as many of us have already mentioned before, to our, and seen, to our colleges, politicians, media. And now we're seeing that debate can't even happen without the risk of being canceled. And as cliche and dreamy as it sounds, the U.S. is a land of many immigrants, where they come to live and see their dreams materialize, things that they can't really fulfill in their countries of origin. And I'll venture to guess that many of us in this room today came as immigrants in hope of that better life, which includes free speech. And if I wanted to be penalized for criticizing the government and having freedom of thought, of expression, and my discussions oppressed, I could have easily lived somewhere else. There are plenty of those places. So I want it, I want my child to continue to have that right in this school and in this country. And many of us come to Brookline and came to Brookline because it's a beautiful town with a fantastic school system. And I still think that's the case. But if we prevent those kids in the school from doing their work and igniting thought and conversation, we're losing growth opportunities for kids, and we're wasting our educators' time. So please let the school and educators do their jobs to let our kids flourish. I don't want indoctrination. I don't want a monopoly on the truth from really anyone. I want these kids to be leaders and have a mind of their own, a mind that's developed by giving them this space to think for themselves and build those connections and that compassion even through conflict. And what better time to do that now? We're briskly not being attacked here in Brookline by bombs, yet we're watching from far away, everyone in Gaza and in Israel, whether it's killing, naming, displacement hostages every day. So maybe if more of today's leaders were allowed this space in their schools and communities, we wouldn't be living through this nightmare. And I don't want to come here every two weeks and waste everybody's time. But I will continue to show up for my kids and for everybody's in this room if I feel that there's pressure on the school to isolate or favor groups over each other and limit the kids from learning and discussing varying and even opposing thoughts and readings and data. And I am so glad to hear of the updates from the school with regards to utilizing national sources and training for the educators. And I would argue that more conversation and maybe combined affinity spaces to allow for these discussions and connections among the kids are really what would pave the way for all those hurting to come together without labels. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
All right, and that concludes public comment for this evening. Thank you, everyone who came and participated. All right, we will next move to presentations and discussions of current issues. Overview of the SY2223 MCAS data with Dr. Fortuna.
Good evening, everyone. I am looking forward to sharing tonight's presentation with you all. I'd like to begin by grounding us in the rich diversity that is our community. The state reports on seven different racial categories, and we'll be looking at those categories this evening in the context of what our data is showing us. And so these are our race and ethnicity numbers from the state for the last year. As you can see, 49.9% of our community is white, 6.4% is African-American, 20.7% is Asian, 11.3% are Hispanic, and 11.6% are multirace, non-Hispanic. We're also going to be discussing another type of diversity that exists within our populations, and that is the income, the diversity of income that we have in our community. So the way that I've structured tonight's presentation is we'll start with a look over time in the aggregate. And what this tells us is if we start here at the left of the screen, you'll see that over time, for the past five years, our
Jody, can I just interrupt one second?
Yeah.
Sorry. Let's see, is this presentation for anyone who's trying to watch online and can't see it well? Is it posted on the meeting materials page already? Okay, so people who are online trying to follow along, they can always go find the actual presentation. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Jody. I just wanted to let people know.
No, thank you, Mariah. I did make sure that we had this early because I realized that some of these slides could be difficult to read because they are very data dense. As you can see, our scores have remained relatively flat across all of our schools over the past five-year period. That's what this first rectangle tells us. If we move to the middle right, this is our ELA for the aggregate, so this includes all of our students. What you'll see in this middle block is that we continue to outperform the state average in ELA and that our performance really starts to increase as our students get older. This is data for students in grades three through 12, so we're truly taking a look at the whole district as we look at this. And then in the final column, again, it shows us that we're outperforming the state. That's the dark dotted line that's at the bottom. And then in between all these threads here, you can see a light gray dotted line. That's the district average with our schools, how they ebb and flow between the district average. So that's our aggregate. That's all students, grades three through 12. And what we thought we would do tonight is show you a way that we look at our student data to try to understand some of the inequities that may be happening. So the next slide in each section, again, we're talking about ELA right now, will be aggregated out by both race and income. So these are our students that are not low-income of five of the different racial categories that the state collects information on. We know that MCAS isn't a perfect measure, and the state doesn't report out on different ethnic backgrounds. It's purely racial. And what this shows us is that we had 500 Asians in grades three through 12, Asian students that tested in grades three through 12, 1,320 students that identify as white, 153 students that identified as Hispanic, 62 not-low-income students that identified as Black African-American, and 285 multirace, non-Hispanic students. Again, we're limited by what the state reports. And so if we look at this, the scaled score for, if we look at the middle column, the scale score for meeting proficiency in the state is 500. And you can see the average scaled scores of our students. All of these racial subgroups increased over the previous years, except for our Black African-American students who had a slight decrease. You'll see in the first column, the percentage of students that were proficient. And that ranges from 81% to 87% for our white students to 82% for our Hispanic students. It drops to 63% for our students that identify as Black African-American, and it rises again to 87% for our multirace, non-Hispanic students. Then, and the final column on each slide is our average student growth percentile. And the state takes students that have like-score profiles across the state, compares them to our students, and then assigns a standard growth percentile based on that comparison. The state identifies the 40 to 60 range as the typical amount of growth that we would expect to see in students. Anything above 60 is considered greater-than-average growth. And you'll see that we have two subgroups that here that identify, that are profiled as higher-than-average growth, our Asian students and our multirace, non-Hispanic students. Our white students are getting close to that 60% mark, and our Hispanic students and our Black African-American students are identifying right in the middle of that range. And then we often, and I won't go through every racial category this evening with you, but I wanted you to see the type of data and information that we have. So this looks at, this slide is looking at our Black African-American not-low-income students. And it really dives in to the number of students that were tested by each school, what the range of their SGP is. You'll see that 60 is where we have the greatest number of Black African-American students, students that self-identified that way at the time of their registration. And we also have some that are way up here at the higher, some students that are way up here at the higher range of 80 and above. And then we look at, did our students' scaled scores, so that's that 500 number, did it improve from the previous year in this subgroup? And what we're noting here is that 49% of our students did not improve from the previous year. 51% of the students did improve from the previous year. And then if they did improve, did their performance level, so meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, partially meeting expectations or not meeting expectations? And you'll see that 37% of our Black African-American not-low-income students stayed at the same level. 13% increased one level, so they either went from partially meeting to exceeding, or they've moved up from not meeting to partially meeting. And then 13% actually declined a level, so they went in the other direction. This bottom scatter plot is actually my favorite piece of data, and it's the one that I always find the most helpful to look at. If you think of the scatter plot in quadrants, we really want to see our students up here in this top right-hand column, because, right-hand quadrant, I'm sorry, I apologize, because that shows us that our students are both demonstrating high growth and high achievement. And that's ultimately what we want for all of our students. And then here, we can see where the students' scaled scores performed. We had some students, 550 is a perfect score. We had some students that are up here. They're obviously exceeding expectations. The vast majority of our students are above the average, and we had a few less than five that did not meet expectations. So any questions about our ELA data? I know I just flew through a lot of data.
Go ahead, Mariah.
Thanks, Jody. My questions are all over the place. I just was marking up on the slides, so I apologize. It might feel a little scattered.
That's fine.
Okay, so one of my questions is about the chart at the middle bottom on the aggregate ELA slide, which is the percent proficient by testing grade level. First off, I want to preface this by saying that this is the data we have, but this is not the data I hope we will have like at some point in the not-too-distant future, as we've talked about on the strategic plan in terms of MCAS as the measurement tool. So Malcolm Cawthorn was interviewed by, I think it was Brookline.News maybe recently, and one of the things he said about this was, right, the test gives you the outcomes it was designed to give you, and I, you know, I'm resonating with that, but it's what we've got. So going back to this one chart, what if any conclusions do you draw from the fact that 85% of our students are proficient in 10th grade, and it dropped and it drops over the years to 64%, let's say, in grade three and 63% in grade four? That that drop, do you think that that's a pandemic issue or to what did you, is it a his? No, but I meant those are young kids who perhaps were not, who were experiencing pandemic and their lower proficiency. So, right, is it a pandemic issue or to what is that attributed?
I think it's a confluence of part of it being the test in that these are our youngest students that haven't had experience with the test before. But there also are students that were heavily impacted by the pandemic. And you'll see that our data tracks very similarly to the state. So that does lead me to believe that we are looking at some of the pandemic challenges that were happening. It also tells me that as our students grow and age and become more more used to the task, their performance also increases a little bit. And I think that that's an important note to make.
Thank you. My next question is the chart to the left of that. So what do you attribute the big variation in difference in scores? For example, overall, the scores went, just going 2018 to 2023, they dropped four points in the district, but Baker has dropped 14 points, Heath is 10, Rutherford is seven. Some of them are much larger, Driscoll is eight. I'm just curious if you have any understanding of discrepancy by building?
I think as I'm learning, Mariah, one of the things that has been greatly valued in Brookline is the autonomy of each school to kind of take a different approach to curriculum and instruction. And that's why the first, our first goal in the strategic plan is really about having a common curriculum in these areas because I think that that's really important. I think we're seeing the variation in teaching styles and curriculum as it's presented to our students here. That would be my hypothesis. Right now, being fairly new, I don't have a great answer to that. But that's my working hypothesis and attaching that to the strategic plan, I think, is an important move that we're making.
Thank you. I have two more questions, David. Is that okay? Okay. My next question is on the top right of Black African-American not-low-income. And it's the chart about change in performance level and it has a sub-note there saying 37% with no previous-year results. Why don't, why do 37% of these students not have previous-year results? Is that a churn thing or that seems, just seems like a huge percentage to me and I don't understand it?
It's only 37% of 62 students. So it's not, it is, while it is a large percentage, it's not a large number of students. And we do experience a lot of churn in the district depending on the time of year and when people come. So it could also be that our, no, our third graders would be included in this. They wouldn't be included in the growth scores. So I think it is attributable to churn, just with this particular population.
Okay. And then my last one is a comment more than a question and it goes to the rate, the results by race not-low-income. None of those slides are numbered. I apologize. I can't like reference it, but by that label. And I just want to reflect, and this is not a comment on you, this is a comment on systemic racism in the district and what we're all doing together or not doing together and the struggles that we've had that we see of the five different populations profiled here, that four of the five are are doing, at least they're in the 80s and upper 80s for their proficiency. And Black African-American is 20 or so points lower and also dropped versus the previous year and just that's, that's disappointing to me and that's not meant to be an attack on you. That's a frustration with the situation and a call to action yet again for all of us. And I'm tired of us having these calls for action. I want us to see really positive change. So I look forward to seeing future years that have trends going in the right direction.
I agree with you and Mariah, I appreciate you actually calling that out. That's, it's one of the things that I thought was super important is that we shine the light on what is actually happening for all of our subgroups and how they're impacted with their learning. So that, thank you for actually recognizing that. And I too hope for better results in future years.
Yeah, and I just want to call out, I mean, on the other page with students who are low-income, 34% of Hispanic students and that also dropped. It's just, it's disappointing and it's sad and we need to do better. Thanks, Jody.
You're welcome.
Can I just piggyback on that to say two quick things? One is to say, this, this also, I think, is the, is the data foundation for the strategic plan equity goals that you discussed last week, right?
Correct.
I mean, so this, this is a strong rationale. And the other thing I just want to note is that I feel like a lot of conversations that I've had with people in the district, people will be quick to, to ask or assert whether the differences are racial or socioeconomic. And I feel like this presentation just needs to be trotted out whenever people make that assertion that it's actually socioeconomic at base and not racial because this, this presentation gives the lie to that, right? So I, I just want to assert that this presentation reveals that at base, it's not a socioeconomic difference, that there are differences in race around learning outcomes in Brookline. Those trend lines are worsening. So just, just to underscore Mariah's point, so it's, that the rationale for equity-based goals is super strong and is borne out by this presentation. So thanks again for presenting it so crystal clear. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you, Jody, for this. There's a lot here. I'm wondering, when I look at the building differences, I think it's on one of the first pages that we, second page that we looked at. Are the demographics significantly different from one building to the next? Or, and or are there particular programs that are at a building that might impact the scores? Because there's, there's quite a discrepancy between some of the schools. So do you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, if we look at this slide that I just put up, it actually shows the population distribution at each school that inform this data. So Pierce had the highest number of students that fell into the Black African-American category with 11 and that decreased down to Heath where there were four students that were included in this category. And what we are seeing is that with some of our schools, I've separated out the special education students from this presentation so that we are just looking at race. We're not looking at race and income. We're not looking at disability status. So the special education programs, unless it's that first aggregate slide, aren't being reflected in this data.
So I was looking at the first aggregate slide and still seeing. So what am I seeing? Proficiency at the Ridley School is 61%, proficiency at Pierce is 79. That feels like a significant difference.
It is, and it could partially be due to programming. But I, I do think that it has a lot to do with the autonomy and the different teaching styles that are happening. And that's not, I'm not blaming teachers. I, I think that this is an imperfect measure. I think all of our classrooms, we're working really hard and doing a great, the best. You know, everybody comes in doing the best that they can for kids every day. But I do think having a consistent curriculum would, and that's on the district, having a consistent curriculum would help to eradicate some of these large swings that we're seeing.
And so moving to the slide, the, the graph that's right, or the chart that's right next to that. So we're still on, I guess, just the second page, the percent proficient. So I'm still trying, I'm still thinking about the pandemic. So you know, if Baker went from 82 proficient to 69% proficient and, and it was the pandemic in the middle. I mean, I'm just wondering what impact that had. And, and, but Lincoln stays 72% to 72%. I'm looking at 2019 to 2023. And so some schools seem to have more, I don't, I just don't know what the, what impact that pandemic might have had. Pierce is 79 to 79. You know, Runkel is 76 to 67. I mean, I gotta believe the pandemic had something to do with that, but.
Oh, I would agree, absolutely. You know, and we have to remember we're testing, you know, individuals and this is just a snapshot of the individuals on, you know, two days out of their, you know, school experience. So I think that the impact of the pandemic can affect students and families in different ways. And I do think that we're seeing that here as well.
Yeah, because I, you know, during the pandemic, they were learning at home. And so depending on what kind of support you had at home probably resulted in better or, or less learning for that year in a way.
What'll be interesting too, I think, and I haven't had a chance to do this yet, is juxtaposing this data onto that chronic absenteeism data to see what that variation is with schools. I think that'll be an interesting analysis for us to take a look at when we do the chronic absenteeism presentation.
This may inform, you know, what we need to do going forward. Again, if people missed instruction or if there's some other reason why it went down, just in terms of where we want to go forward. And then one other question I have is, so when you're looking at the Black African-American not-low-income, it's a total of 62, which is, you know, you have 11 and four. Can we draw conclusions with that number? It, it feels like not a significant number of students or that it's, it's too big a burden on each student to, to perform. You know what I'm not?
It is, it is. And this is just one subgroup that we chose to look at. It happens to be for our not-low-income students, our smallest subgroup. And you'll see further on in the presentation, we look at, we do this deeper dive into our other subgroups. We actually do this for all of our students and all of our subgroups, but I just wanted to give a sampling to the committee and the community tonight.
Wait, but this is every year, we're getting the same finding, right? That, that low-income, white and Asian kids consistently outscore not-low-income. Is that what you're asking?
Right, but Suzanne's point is that it's a very small sample size.
But it's the same sample, just because the N is around 60, we have that same N every year and we have the same finding every year. So on aggregate, we're getting a sample that's very consistent, we're getting a consistent finding, right?
Consistent results with a very small number.
Yeah, but on aggregate, it becomes a more reliable finding.
But the, but the question is more, but more macro level across other school districts, for instance. Do we see the same phenomena? So I, I would agree with you that it's accurate as to Brookline because we're seeing it consistent, but do larger populations in other districts bear out the same data?
So, so the, the main, sorry, were you gonna?
No, go ahead, Stephen.
So the main tracker of this stuff prior to COVID was the Sanford Opportunity Project. We stopped keeping track of this stuff in around 2000, right before COVID is when it stopped tracking this. And it found similar results statewide, but it found that Brookline was trending worse than our neighbor districts. This, this, they stopped tracking this at COVID, so we don't know since then if we're continuing to be worse. But that was what they found prior to COVID, is that our trend line was worse.
And I, I think too, the difference between what, we're talking two different groups too. Suzanne was talking about our not-low-income students where there's a much greater disparity in the number of students in the subgroup. When we start to disaggregate by low-income, you'll see that those numbers are actually much more consistent with each other and that our Black African-American students are actually our second-biggest subgroup compared to our white students at 63 and 65 respectively.
Thank you, Jody.
So a question I have that goes back to one of Suzanne's earlier questions regarding the difference in performance between schools. So given that we have three schools that essentially didn't see any decline at all from pre-pandemic to post-pandemic, I'll call it, are there any policy differences between schools such as around homework that might correlate with these results? Some schools might not have the amount of homework.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that because I'm still, even though I've been here eight months, which went by really fast, I'm still learning as the school year unfolds, but I can get back to you on that, David.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Stephen.
So, so Dr. Fortuna, thanks for this report. When, when we switch indicators away from MCAS, what is that going to do, do you think, to our ability to look at trend lines? Are we going to have a gap and then we're just going to start all over again? Or do you think we're going to be able to interpolate from a new data set using the old data to the new? How, how do you, how do you think about that going forward?
I'm hoping that what we can do is we can triangulate the data so that we're not just using, right now, because we lack the consistent common assessment system, also being addressed in the strategic plan. Because we lack that, we don't have any way to triangulate data. And looking at data, triangulating is definitely the best way to truly understand what's happening. So my hope is that once we have some finer tools to look at this, we'll be able to triangulate the data and really understand much better, have a much more robust picture of what's happening in the district.
Would you consider having essentially two data sets for the interim period where we continue to track against MCAS while we start using common standards?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. I mean, thanks.
I feel like I need to know a little bit more about that. So I understand that we're, we're looking at data right now that's been reported by an out, outside, like, outside of Brookline, right? And when we start to get data through common assessments, are we expecting to have a sophisticated level of reporting? Because that seems to be sort of surprising to me that we would be able to do this ourselves.
We actually partner, Sarah, with a wonderful group right now, Open Architects, that really helps us. And we're working on using our M-class data right now as well as creating a dashboard for our MTSS success to start to track outcomes in the strategic plan. So they've really been a great partner who have helped with this analysis and this level of reporting. We have all of this demographic data on our students and our, for example, our M-class data, which you'll have a presentation of in January, we're working out some communication issues between systems right now. But I do believe that we'll be able to do as sophisticated of an analysis for our students.
And just to be clear, again, I'm sorry because I'm new to this. What we're seeing right now has been put through our own interpretation or this was just given to us raw?
No, it was put through our, well, it's the raw data that we've created the, the charts and tables to make it communicable to the community.
Okay, and just one more.
Wait, so just, we're disaggregating using Aspen, right? We're not disaggregating using, we're taking, my, okay. So my understanding is that we take the raw data, but we, we're disaggregating using our, using the Aspen portal.
Okay, that's clear.
So it's not like there's a sophisticated system that's coming out of MCAS.
Right.
It's just the MCAS data, then we use Aspen to disaggregate to this level of detail and then someone is making beautiful PowerPoints, right?
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick one, Jody. Do we do the NAEP still or no? Does that still?
We do. Not in every school. I believe we have three schools this year that are scheduled to take it.
That gives us district, kind of district information, not individual school information.
Correct.
But it does give us some information.
It gives us some, but it's not all of our schools. It gives us some, but it's not all of our schools.
Right, okay, thanks.
All right, don't think we have any more questions at this point.
All right.
Keep going.
So if we take a look over time, this, these are our math scores. Again, we are continuing to outperform the state. We're seeing similar patterns to what we saw before where our scores as a district remain relatively flat over the past five year period. But there continues to be some discrepancies between schools right now. And then this is the same breakdown according to income and race in math. And you'll see that our students are, they're meeting, our average scaled score is meeting the state. However, we did drop one, one number versus the previous year for our Asian students. And we dropped from five oh three to five hundred for our black African American students. Again, recognizing that that's a relatively small N of students. You'll also see here that the gap is wider in math than it is in ELA for these groups. And then this shows us that, again, we have some students, our Asian students are performing very well with their standard growth percentile. There's many more of them in this not low income category for math. But you'll see how many are, how many of the, our students are up here in the left hand quadrant, which is very exciting. And again, you'll, you'll note the churn and you'll see that we're starting to see some separation with this subgroup between the amount of students that improved from the previous year and to the students that didn't. And then this is our low income data where, again, the gap becomes very significant between our percent proficient for our Asian low income students and our, well, everybody, all of the other subgroups. There's a large discrepancy, but especially between our Hispanic and our black African American students. And you can see that in both of those categories, where actually this is the one area where we're performing below the state average consistently. And we had a fairly significant drop that, a five percent with our Hispanic and six percent with our black African American students. But we also experienced that same drop with our white low income students at four percent. So this is something that bears more looking into. If we look at the growth score for our Hispanic students too, that's something that this data, once we did the analysis, prompted some curiosity for me that I'm looking forward to examining a little more closely.
Jody, do you want some questions on this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, Helen.
So I was looking at the, the first slide that you did with math and that the schools. And I'm wondering if Baker might have been a mistake on the ELA? Because there's, if you look at, you know, math in all the schools, it stayed more or less constant. You know, a couple of percentage points here, a couple of percentage points there, maybe down a bit. But Baker is not, doesn't have that huge drop that they do in English, but why?
My hypothesis is because we are using consistent math programs at the elementary level, the middle school level and the middle school level. So all of our schools have investigations three at the elementary level. And at the middle school level, they change to Desmos. And I think what we're seeing play out here is that curricular consistency that is probably most lacking right now in ELA.
No, that's a good answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I was still hoping maybe there was something wrong with, with Baker.
No, unfortunately.
Okay.
Jody, I have a question about math, particularly given the emphasis that we've placed on Calculus Project and the scores that we see here for black and Hispanic students. And I'm wondering sort of what that says about, should we be doing something different with? Is Calculus Project creating any sort of protective factors for students? Or what does that mean in light of these? And I, protective factors meaning mitigating the, mitigating the bad results exactly. I guess that's the way I would put it, yeah.
I believe it is, Mariah. I can get back to you with the grade ten specific data on this, which is where we'd, in our middle school data. I can cut that more finely for you. I don't have those.
I would love that, yeah, I would really love that. Because African American and Latino scholar, young scholar starts in sixth grade, is that right? Yep, so I would love to see that differentiation of data of before and after. Thank you. I mean, it's just so concerning, especially if we're so much below the state average. It it feels like there's, there's a real problem. I mean, there's obviously a real problem, but that puzzles me given the emphasis we've placed on Calculus Project.
I will definitely do that for you all. And then science, you'll notice we don't have student growth percentiles. And that's because you don't take the science test every year. Science is just tested in grades here in Brookline. It's five, eight and nine. Students take the physics test in grade nine. So nobody has a growth score in science. And you'll see again that for our not low income students, the disparity between scores is fairly significant. But again, we're talking a very small N. We're talking only thirty one students. So it it's a very small number of students. I almost hesitated to report out on it because it was such a small number here. And the reason the number is so much smaller is because of the reduced grade levels where it's tested. And you'll, you'll see because it is, I purposely picked this slide because it is such a small number of students. Performance has varied widely over the years. And then if we look at this by low income students.
Sorry, Jody, where were you, when you were just saying performances varied wildly over the years? Where were you looking when you, was there?
Looking at this, the line graph.
Of that one, yeah, thank you.
Looks a little bit like a roller coaster ride, good physics.
How come we did not have Brookline high scores for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty one, do you know? Oh, twenty twenty one was the pandemic.
We're.
Yeah, no, but twenty twenty one, there's no scores in twenty nineteen, I'm just wondering.
Um, I'm not sure. I can check on that for you. I'm wondering, and I'm not remembering correctly right now if they administered the science test during the pandemic. Let me check on that.
Thanks.
Wasn't there something also about them changing? Could have sworn there was a point where they changed the test and so they weren't comparing. Yeah, I want to say there was something like that, that like the test had changed significantly and they had said it wasn't a valid comparison with the prior. You're, I'm pretty sure that was it.
Yeah, that's exactly what it was. Thank you, Mariah. Michelle just confirmed that for me, that that was the year that they changed the test. Any other questions?
Yes, so a question I have on this slide, unlike with the other subject areas, we sort of see the, a positive trend for the most part. Where pre pandemic to the current year, or twenty twenty three rather, we see some significant increases. And yet at three schools, we see decreases and at Driscoll in particular, it's a pretty stark decrease. So I'm just wondering, to what do you attribute this data?
Again, I think it's lack of consistency. I think we're working to bring more consistency to science right now. But unlike math, which is probably, math and social studies are probably our most consistent programmatic curriculums right now. I think that we're seeing some of the variation here. And my guess is we're also seeing some variation based on the time on learning for each subjects, which our middle school study is working to address.
Right, because half our schools saw pretty big jumps from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty three. So that's great to see, but then a couple of them, pretty big drops.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't have a great answer for that yet. I'm still working to uncover that, but I can definitely report back to what I find for you.
Jody, on the aggregate science slide, there's one out of district school here.
Yes, I, that was when I ran this through with our data partner. We do have some students that are at that school and they showed up on our, out of district on this slide.
Do we have out of district data that in the future we could also see to represent our entire student population?
I'm sure Ms. O'Connell.
Not by a specific school, right, but as a population? I would love to have the entirety of the student population visible if that was possible.
Yeah, Ms. O'Connell can definitely share that with you.
Thank you. I mean, I just think in sort of our reporting going forward, these are all our students. We're responsible for educating them. Let's make sure that we have understanding of how everyone's doing to the greatest extent we can.
And we are making such great strides in being more inclusive of all of our students in the Brookline community. So I I think that would be important, Mariah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Stephen, go ahead.
Quick question. And will you remind us, Dr. Fortuna, on the strategic plan, there were specific benchmarks around gains and learning outcomes. Were they in both ELA and math or were they just in one or the other?
They were both in ELA and math.
Given that the discrepancy in math is so much more severe than ELA, would you consider modifying it so that the math, so that math is a higher priority? Or that the benchmark is more aggressive in math?
We could do that.
Would, I'm, I'm not recommending it. I'm wondering if it would make sense to you.
It, I'm treating them both as equal priorities right now. And with that three percentage point increase, I think we're being aggressive with both. And I I think that that's an important thing to, for us to remember. I think for math, really what I want to look at too, and this is in the strategic plan, is how some of our supportive protective programs like Step to Success and MECO are aligning to support our students more fully as they move through our different grade levels in math.
Okay, okay, I was just thinking aloud.
Yep, thank you, Stephen.
Thanks.
All right, go ahead.
All right. Whoops, let me get back here. So what are we doing right now? We have our strategic plan, which I'm really excited is referring back to this. But right now, we've identified focus students for each school that fall into our subgroups that are impacted by the large and I said achievement gaps. I really think it's opportunity gaps as well. These students are the focus of my conversations with building leaders, curriculum coordinators, MECO and steps to success. We're working to strengthen our tier one instruction to accelerate student growth. And we're really working to, in collaboration with OSS, to design scaffold and supports to increase our students' likelihood of success as a district. So I didn't want the community to think, oh, we're waiting till we have a fully voted strategic plan or we're not doing anything right now. So thank you. That's our presentation for tonight. I'm sorry that my dog is popping into the screen.
Thank you very much. A lot of information for us to digest and further questions to explore. Anyone else, Natalia?
I just wanted to ask you about this, your first bullet around identifying focused student for each schools. Are you also looking at students who may not fall into the subgroups but who may be not showing growth? For example, from third grade to fourth grade, who may need testing for, you know, like I wonder if there are students who are, I mean, I understand this is a one day score, but if they don't show any growth between, you know, years, like to identify students who may need additional supports irrespective of the subgroups, like, what, what are you looking at to identify these students?
We're, we're looking at the individual students standard, a standard score and their growth percentile to identify the students. And we're also looking at students that are currently receiving services that, or in students that might not yet be receiving any students, services. So we're really having rich, robust conversations about the students, but we're drilling down to that individual student level.
I'm wondering if you can go into a little more detail about the, we are working to strengthen our tier one instruction. What specifically is being done?
Um, right now, we are really working on reviewing and identifying our literacy program to really make sure we're delivering the best program for our students. We're in collaboration with The Hill. And we just had our first professional development session with them yesterday, which is really exciting. So we're doing that. We're also, Dr. Guillory referred to his focus of looking at student engagement. That's all a function of tier one education as well. So those are just two quick examples of what we're doing right now.
Suzanne?
Yeah, so this is probably obvious, Jody, but when I'm looking at this, I, I don't actually see the word teacher. So when we're talking about identifying students and, and the second bullet, students are focused conversation with building leaders, curriculum coordinators, MECO and steps to success. I'm wondering what opportunities teachers have to talk about their individual students and getting support and looking for growth.
Thank you. I really just kind of focused on what was in my immediate or in our immediate locus of control as OTL right now. And we're really working more so with the leaders and with the expectation that that's moving down to the teachers. But I didn't want to over promise something that I am not quite sure how that's happening in each building.
And I think we also have coaches and specialists in our, in our schools that could also be a big help to teachers when we're identifying individual students who might need a little extra help or a little extra support.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much for this presentation, Dr. Fortunov. And we will now move on to our next one. And we will now move on to our next one, which is the FY 2024 Hiring Profile and Diversity Recruiting and Retention Efforts. Welcome, Ms. Hernandez, whenever you're ready.
Hi, thank you. I'm waiting for Claire here.
I'm sorry, can you hear me? There was a slight delay.
You can, yes.
Okay, so good evening. I'm glad to be here. I know not everyone's had an opportunity to meet Christina Hernandez. I want to do a formal introduction. We have our new Assistant Director of Educational Equity, Christina Hernandez. Kristi, do you want to say hello?
Hi, I'm Kristi Hernandez. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I'm excited to dig in and I'm excited to partner with you all in the work moving forward as we all work to establish both equity and excellence for all of our kids.
Thank you so much. Kristi has started exactly six weeks ago yesterday and has jumped right in. So we are pleased to be presenting the PSB staffing profile for 2324. So we'll get started. So on this slide, what you're going to have is the data is linked here, is a public facing reporting data that comes from DESI. This is our race, ethnicity and gender staffing for the academic years of 2021 through 2022 through 2022 through 2023. What's important to note is that DESI, when they report their data, it's by the school year. And this is actually data that is the FTE data, which is professionally licensed practitioners. So those are our school teachers, our school adjustment counselors and social workers, et cetera, and our full-time employees. And on this slide, you will see our PB, PSB student demographic data that's also reported from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And we have our 2021 through 2022 data and our 2022 through 2023 data. And again, it's important to note that this data is again reported by the school year. And as you can see, it's important to note that we've had a very small different differential in our data between 2021 through 2022 and 2022 and 2023 on this particular slide. The next slide I want to go into is our PBS, PSB staffing demographic data, just to kind of unpack it a little bit. The 2023 PSB staffing demographic data in the following slides that are going to be coming were gathered with the support of the Office of Administration and Finance and our Strategy and Performance Team with the Munis system. The accounting and payroll database utilized by the town of Brookline. The Human Resource Application Tracking System, which is Talent Ed, is where PSB employees self-report their demographic data during the application process. Reporting this information is optional. This information is then entered manually by multiple staff members into Munis and Aspen. Therefore, it is essential to acknowledge that the demographic data is subject to some human error. So on this slide, we have the PSB new hire staff demographic data for 2023. You'll note throughout the presentation, we will talk about data coming from Munis database. This is used by the town of Brookline. And in here you'll see on this, this is what our new staff hire data is coming from. What's important to note with our new staff data is that, excuse me. It's gotten wacky on me. I apologize. I'm losing some of my connection here.
While Claire is pulling the slides back up, I know that that's a lot of information surrounding a lot of databases. Does anybody have any clarifying questions at the moment?
David, can I?
I should point out that.
So far, so good.
No, I just wanted to say that I know that this data is the data that the district has access to. However, the 2223 data is, was actually flagged last year for requiring correction. It looks like DESI still has, I know it's active online, but it was already flagged because we had caught that the, if you look at the 2122 FTEs versus the 2223, we actually lost FTEs in that period. We didn't gain them. And that data shows that we'd actually gone up by almost 50 FTEs. So certainly you all didn't know that and were operating off of the best data source that we have. However, we had already flagged it with DESI. So I just want to let everyone, sort of put it on the record tonight as opposed to having it having, having that float out there. Yeah, so if you look on the demographic data chart that shows FTEs by binary gender and by DESI categories of race. If you look from 2122, it shows 1,299.4. And then last year, 2223, it shows 1,345.8. So that would imply we went up by almost 50 FTEs. But in fact, we didn't, I think we dropped by, I can't remember the exact number right now. I don't want to say it, but a not insignificant number we dropped by. So we had flagged this last year, but DESI still has it. It hasn't been updated. Right, so.
Can you hear me?
I'm sorry. 2223 is wrong. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, for some reason it won't, let me go back to the slideshow. So I think, Mariah, you were on, were you just talking about this particular data right here?
No, I was on the staff data and I don't, Claire, were you on? I don't know if you could hear anything I was saying.
I could only hear part of it.
Okay, so I just wanted to say, just like this, the, you're working off of the DESI data, which is the best data that we have, I suppose, most comparable. However, last year we had flagged that the DESI data that had been processed into the DESI system, there's some sort of a mistake in it. It had been flagged last year for correction. It looks like DESI hasn't corrected it yet. So just FYI, there is, I'm not going to say it drastically changes the sort of ratios of staff that we see here because we don't know that, but there, but the 1,345.8 total is, is not correct. It's substantially lower than that. Because it was, we know that we had fewer staff in 2223 than we did in 2122.
Yes. And I think part of that has to do with the reporting system.
Yeah, it's entirely some sort of glitch in the reporting system, but it still needs to be corrected by DESI. It looks like it hasn't happened yet.
Exactly. And so I think what's important to note that while we've been trying to collect this data, it's, you know, we've, we realized that there's multiple systems that are being used that are not talking to one another. And I know DESI gets all of their data from us, but that it's, it's really challenging because we have the self-reported data that's going into Talent Ed. Then we have data that's going into Munis and into Aspen. And so I gather that's what's making this data point coming up that way.
Well, then can I follow up with that on the staff demographics for 2023? It says 1,891. Is that including Paris? Is that why?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sneaking ahead.
I'm sorry, that's okay. It's fine. For some reason, I'm kind of frozen, unfortunately. So I know I left off on this particular slide, which was our new hire. Can you hear me? I'm freezing a little bit. You guys are frozen on my side. Can anyone, can anyone hear me? I apologize.
I can hear you.
We can hear you.
That's great. All right. So when you look at the new higher staff data that we have in this particular, what we were trying to express was that the data represented here again was coming from Munis. And it was important to note that the data reflects every employee at that time that was hired for 2023. So it's not the school year, it's the full calendar year, which is also something that seems to be coming up. Now, Mariah, is that kind of something that, is that what you were referring to?
No, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. Why don't you keep going though? I feel like we got out what we needed to. So I don't want to interrupt. Yeah, I don't want to interrupt your flow. Keep going. Yeah.
That's fine. Again, you know, our systems are being updated and we anticipate a clean way of being able to report once the strategy team is able to get all of the systems connected to one another. In this particular slide, you see the new higher staff demographic as well, but it's in the pie chart. And it just gives you another visual of what's happening with our new hires for, again, for the calendar year of 2023. What's really, again, really interesting to know is that this is going to include all of our, this is not just FTE. This is a combination of all of our employees, including our part-time staff as well and substitutes. And then this is where you see it in the 1891 on the all staff demographic data. And again, in the pie chart.
Claire, could I ask what other race means in the demographic data?
So what's, what's really interesting with the other races is that we have a combination of DESI only reports a certain category of races. So if we were to go back to this, back to this slide, which is we have kind of tried to align with DESI. We have African American, Indian, Asian, Black, Caucasian. We have some who did not identify Hispanic and other race. So the other race is typically what we would call our mixed race. So that is people who identify, they might identify as Black and Hispanic or all of the Hispanic races. Oftentimes, if they're Black, I'm sorry, if you have the someone who identifies as Asian as well as being Black, there would be under other race and or mixed race.
And I can jump in there too as well, Claire. One of the things in using and comparing data from these different databases is that different databases use different terms synonymously. So where DESI uses multi-race non-Hispanic to cover, like Claire said, all individuals of mixed race who are not Hispanic, Munis uses the term other race to cover that same meaning. So all a, in this case, staff members who identify with more than one race category and are non-Hispanic, that's what's covered by other race. And so do those numbers though, add up when you are looking at them with, with sort of similar terms? Yes. So those numbers. I'm just looking back at the other slide. I thought it said 11. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that that other race and, and what we called mixed race in a different slide are in fact. So that said 14, did I miss that?
Well, to Val's point, when it says on the top of those slides, 2023, is that actually fall like sort of the current fiscal year? So it's not comparable to the other data?
Right, because we have to keep in mind with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they will, we continue to be certified. They will be updated sometime probably in the spring.
So the date, also the data that we're presenting in the later slides where we just saw that other race term for the first time. Also, this data is current, it's our current data as, as of when the data was pulled. So I pulled that data. This is student data, but I pulled this student data December 11th, 2023. So that's who's in our buildings, who, who PSB students are as of December 11th, whereas the same thing with staff data, I pulled that data from Munis currently. So that's our data up to the minute, whereas the DESI data, that's not up to the minute. Obviously, that's covering the 2022, 2023 school year. So that's also why there's some differences in those numbers.
And so when you look at this particular data point here, you see the, our student data is 52% of our students identify as students of color and or mixed race. And again, what Kristi was referring to, the other race, this is where you, you get that mixed race right here in this particular item right here. Which is 11. Go ahead, Kristi.
I'd wanted to say something. I think it's very important to acknowledge that percentage that we have here, 52% students of color slash mixed race. When we discuss equity, I think sometimes it's easy in those discussions for it to seem like equity is something that serves a subset of our population. I think it's very important to acknowledge and recognize that PSB, that the Public Schools of Brookline is a majority students of color district. I think that's extremely important to keep in mind with these conversations. And also it's at least 52% because we know that with the current race categories that are offered in these databases, Arab, Middle Eastern, Persian students are marked or defined through the white category, but may not be having the experience of a white person as they move through the world. So if there was a different category for those individuals to select, there's a chance that they would. And there's a chance that people there actually identify as people of color, but don't have a box to delineate Arab, Middle Eastern or Persian descent. So that 52% is a conservative estimate.
Yes, I think, and this is something we've been talking about a lot, that as, as we talk about ethnicity and race, there's such a huge difference, but then there's the areas where it aligns and that was the point that Kristi just made. We are finding when we are, are speaking to teachers and staff as well as our students, they're not finding a place where they can truly identify who they are to the district. They're kind of put into this box with what DESI has to offer. And when we're looking at some of our data that we have presented before, where they had other categories, it's because we try to allow for people to be able to identify in more than one area, which also kind of put us in a position of having data that look very different.
I also want to share with the school committee that while we don't have control over the demographic questions and delineations that are offered by DESI and Munis, we do have control of the demographic categories that we offer to our people in the data measures that we from our office send out. And we are amending those categories so that our data, at least that we have control over, can reflect the full diversity of our community and provide a counterpoint from which to look at this data as well.
And I think if we were to go into, if we were to pull some reports from Aspen, we would see some of that already.
Mariah, you have a question?
Yeah, just on this last point, are you going to amend Hispanic to be Hispanic Latino?
In the ones that, in the ones that we've been writing in our own data measures, it's Hispanic slash Latinx, the term that we've used.
Great. Just because as a family that is Latinx but not Hispanic, it would be nice to, we've had difficulties even understanding what we're supposed to write because we're not included. So
Exactly.
Absolutely.
So it's great to have that. Is it possible, this is my second question, is it possible for the staff demographic data to represent that in terms of FTE instead of headcount for us? Not during the meeting, but like find that data. In Munis, will it allow you to see who, what the FTE, fractional FTE is of people?
I think eventually it will. I know that Susan is working on getting that via the, on the staff roster. We're still working on getting that, but I'm sure that they'll be able to get that information to us as soon as they are able to actually really kind of reconcile their systems in HR.
Yeah, that would be great, even if it's not for this year, because it's still a work in progress for future years to be able to see that too.
Yeah, I definitely see.
Yeah, aligning it with what's in the DESI database too. Like they're reporting on FTE, so it's helpful to see both of those.
I think also too, one thing is we looked at that data this today, actually we pulled it preliminarily, but we don't want to present anything until we can ensure that those numbers are as accurate as they can be.
Exactly. Until the systems are really actually aligned and speaking to one another, it's just really tricky presenting that data.
To your earlier point about a lot of our Middle Eastern students not necessarily feeling that they really belong in the, the category of white. Is there any thought given to the district creating its own Middle Eastern category? Or do you think it's more important to stay aligned with DESI?
I think it's a combination of things. I don't think we have a choice but to always make sure that we have, that we're in alignment with DESI. But I definitely think there are measures we can put in place. Like I said already, in Aspen, there were other categories that were suffered from what was actually being pulled from Aspen and going to DESI. I think it's really important for us to even unpack the ethnicity part of it. Not all cultures identify as race. They really live much more in their cultural. Not all cultures identify as race. They they really live much more in their cultural and ethnicity. And so I think it's really important for us to be able to report on that as well. So I guess the the short answer is yes, we we are thinking about it and we are trying to develop a tool that's actually going to be able to highlight that.
I also just wanted to share one last thing. We're going to talk about this a little bit more later, but in the staff family climate surveys that we're reimagining in that we're we're delineating that category, Middle Eastern, Persian, Arab, but we're also offering a space for the community to share the demographic categories, ethnicity categories, race categories that they feel would best represent them, the questions that they would like to see in this moving forward. Because I think if we're reimagining the categories, it needs to be with the input of the community and responsive to the identities of our community members.
Absolutely.
All right, anyone else? All right, go ahead.
And so here we can see our windows and mirrors slide. Windows offer new views while mirrors offer reflections. And this is kind of the mantra with which we are imagining or that's guiding us in our hiring, in our hiring and retention efforts. On the next slide. Here we have the statement, the Office of Educational Equity and Human Resources believes that windows and mirrors are essential as we consider hiring and retention efforts for the public schools of Brookline. As we develop a roadmap, we look to the spring of twenty twenty-four to define a complete plan for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five. I wanted to emphasize one thing here. I think with this, it's easy to ask, well, why are we waiting until spring twenty twenty-four? And I want to be clear that we're not waiting. We feel the urgency of the moment. And in twenty, in the spring of twenty twenty-four is when we expect to have that benchmark data from the staff climate survey that we'll be putting out. We're going to speak about this more, I'll go into detail more later, but this is the first time that we will be offering staff climate surveys to the full PSB employees since twenty eighteen. And I think it is extremely important that we have their experiences to pull from as we reimagine this. But in the meantime, we have developed other data measures that are already going out. So we can hear what are the experiences of all our educators of historically marginalized backgrounds? Because without that, without fixing that culture, how will we retain educators of color? How will we retain educators of historically marginalized identities? So while we are going to have our complete data in twenty twenty-four, we are taking data now as well and moving decidedly towards that point.
So can I just ask a question then? So on retention, like Claire and I emailed about this, but I don't think I saw it reflected in the slides. I saw absolute number changes between the two school years. But I'm wondering if we know how we did with retention of staff between those two years in in the subcategories.
So we do, we were able to pull that data by race category. The thing is, this is another data set where we have that preliminary data, but we want to ensure that it is accurate before we share that with the larger community. But we've pulled it preliminarily. It's being checked by HR.
Okay, so when will we see it?
I'm not sure when we'll see it. This is something that HR and I discussed today. So we are waiting because they're checking one a few, they're checking something that we didn't have data for one small subset of this. So they're going back and checking as to why we don't have that data and what happened in those calculations. So I can get back to you on that.
Okay, if you could send a timeline, that'd be great.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
Okay, so here we have our PSB district commitments, our efforts around diversity, recruiting efforts, as well as our diversity retention efforts. I think what's interesting to to note here is that the only way to truly be successful with this is going to be through our partnerships. And we've had some longstanding partnerships, the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, and that's our MPDE. We have a new partnership with the Teachers Lounge. We have an existing partnership with Brookline Educators for Educated Diversity B. OEE, we'll go into this a little bit, our implicit bias tool to be used by our interview committees. And then on the retention efforts, again, continued partnership with MPDE. We have our Building Bridges Conference, which is a wonderful opportunity for our HR department to partner as well as OEE partner with that organization when they have their large diversity fears as we're looking for teachers and staff to fill positions. The Teachers Lounge has an amazing program, Classroom Leaders of Color Fellowship that we're going to just in a little bit. And again, some of our efforts with the Brookline Educators for Educators for Diversity, where they host events and support teachers who are onboarding. Continue to work with our affinity space opportunities, the OEE educator and staff feedback forums, which Christie alluded to a little bit, that she'll go into more detail in just a moment. Professional development coming shortly in twenty twenty-four, specifically around the implicit bias tool. And as we consider what we're looking for in doing and building capacity across the district, as well as BIPOC mentoring program that we hope to kick off in twenty twenty-four. And so here I want to talk a little bit about the Office of Equity Equity Bias and Hiring Tool. This is a tool that I think is going to be really helpful as we start to think about hiring and what what we're looking for and some of the efforts that are really important to to think about when we are hiring. We know that it's the only way to actually consider diversifying is to be intentional about it. I think part of being intentional about that work is is also being honest about the work. So using a tool and doing professional development is going to be really helpful. So I just want to click on this for just a little bit. So folks will be able to to see in this tool, this is a tool that we will be using with our leadership. So our building principals, we will be using this tool with our coordinators as well as our directors. So when they are developing a position is going to be posted and we are doing a call for a committee, this is a tool that would be used with them, excuse me, that would be used with them to ensure that we are going over our mission and our vision of the district, going over our core values of the district and really making sure that we are in sync and tandem. Looking at our school committee policies around professional staffing, excuse me, equity policy, our policy against discrimination, really starting to unpack the definition of hidden bias and making sure that we understand the key characteristics of of bias as well. And then really getting down to the research, what does the research tell us? Because we want to always make sure that everything that we do is research-based. So this would be our, I believe would be a really great tool that all of our hiring teams will be able to use in conjunction of whatever is being developed by our human resource department. Do we have any questions about the tool at all?
Could you go into a little more detail about hidden bias? And how the tool helps with that?
So what's really good about the tool is that this is a full professional development. You really start to go into trying to have have folks understand what the hidden biases are. You have your hidden bias, you have your unconscious bias, your implicit bias, and how it occurs when individuals make judgments about people based on certain characteristics without even realizing it. So this is a tool that we will be using with those particular teams where we would go into all the different things. So for instance, they have here, we talk about skin color, we talk about gender. These are all the things that often come into our unconscious and sometimes our implicit bias. And so we talk about hate, height and weight. We talk about marital and parental status, disability, foreign accent, excuse me. And then you talk about the, right here, you have the the key characteristics of hidden bias, inherent or makeup as as a human, as human beings, often based on stereotypes, exposure, lived experience, and dominant culture. It's really important as you think about working with the committees before they go into having a session, that they have a real understanding of the things that come along with them. This year, OEE has been doing professional development about what does culture have to do with it? We often bring all of our culture with us. We have that baggage that comes with us. And so it's really important to be able to unpack that with the committees before they go into a hiring cycle.
Sorry, who's this tool used with?
This would be used, initially, this would be used with our building leaders. We would do professional development with our building leaders, our directors and our coordinators. They are typically the people who are leading our interview committees. So when they put a call out for a committee, they've already would would actually have been trained and they would use this tool with the hiring committee when they come in. Typically, when we come in together as a team, we come in, we look at resumes together. Before you even look at the resumes together, you would go through this tool to make sure people have an understanding of what some of the things they need to be thinking about and looking at before they get started.
I am curious about some of the categories with this tool. So if this is at the stage where you're collecting resumes, generally speaking, I would think one doesn't know somebody's height and weight from a resume, for instance. So are those categories something that are also utilized for in-person interviews and in other ways?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So throughout the 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 process, you refer, you're referring back to the tool.
Natalia, go ahead.
I I just wanted to to know, I mean, I I understand sort of implicit bias playing a role, but does it play a role in our case in the sense of like, are the pools, like where do we lose candidates of color? Is it that we don't have a number of applicants? We screen them out during the review of of, like, somebody needs to to say that it's happening. Like, basically, I'm I'm, when I hire people, sometimes I don't have a really good pool. And so quotas are often used when that's the case. And you say, you know, we won't review candidates unless we have, you know, fifty percent are candidates of color. Like, have you thought about more structural ways to increase? So bias is one way to think about it, but I'm not convinced yet unless you have evidence that that is what is preventing us from hiring.
No, I just think this is just one of the tools that we'll be using. I think in collaboration with HR, I know that Dr. Givens is also we are hiring, we've we've just hired a talent acquisition person. I believe that OEE will be working along with that person and will be developing other systems and structures. But this is just one tool that we have developed that we wanted to share.
So just thanks, I was, I appreciate that. And my question was in the same vein as Natalia's. I think previously in in the area of recruitment and retention, I think we're used to hearing the focus of this being very far upstream, upstream on outreach and recruitment. And then later on, on, on the actual interviewing tools. Can you talk a little bit about, maybe to take a step back on just your overall? Because this is the first time, I think, you've presented to us on the topic of recruitment and retention. Can you just talk to us just a bit about your philosophy on doing this work? I would love to hear how you're going to approach this work at all, since the docketed topic is recruiting and retention efforts. I'd just love to hear you talk about how you're approaching it.
I think that the the best way to be approaching it is to really be intentional. I think we have to, I I would say this, that I think in in Brookline, I don't think it's super challenging for us to actually recruit BIPOC staff. I think Brookline is a well sought-after district. I think a lot of our focus is going to be around retention. But as we think about recruitment, I think we can be intentional. I think there's ways of of doing that. I think it's through our partnerships, but also extending ourselves. We have we have our own pipeline that we can create with our own students. We have students who leave, who Brookline produces amazing students who leave this district. They go off to what I would call PWIs, predominantly white institutions, as well as HBCUs and historically, historically black colleges and universities, many of them major in education. And they come back home. But are we going, are we going out to those schools and are we recruiting with them? Are we staying in touch with them? We have a former director of MECO who puts together a huge HBCU and university event. We have lots of students who were there. Are we are we connecting with those recruiters who were there who are recruiting our students? Are we staying in connection with them to make sure that when students are graduating or are looking to graduate in their junior, senior year, that we're pulling those students to come back to Brookline? Do we have a pipeline for those students? I think those are some of the things that we need to look at in regards to recruitment. I think we can do that.
Okay, so I'm I'm just comparing it to what I know, which was just the previous year plus where where there was a focus on the Brookline Educators for Educational Diversity. There are a lot of outreach and recruitment events. And so it was really working pretty far upstream in the pipeline, unless so once the recruitment work was done. So you, so this this sounds like a bit of a shift that you think that the 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 recruitment work is something that the portfolio to you is that the work is about once the the pipeline is already built, that it's more about how we absorb them into the system?
I think, I think.
Fair, is that a fair?
I would say it's a combination. I think it's a little bit of both. I don't think we abandoned the efforts that we worked on before. I think we continue those. But I think this is in addition to, I think it's a both and an and. I don't think it's just, I don't think it's a total shift. I think it's just adding on. I think we just need to broaden our scope of how we think about doing it.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there certain categories that you're looking for in terms of the recruitment? So beyond race, do you also look at religion? Do you look at gender? There have been some in the past, you asked about having more male teachers, for instance?
Yes, absolutely. And I think those are some of the things that, you know, in collaboration with HR as they are developing their staff, that those are some of the things that we'll be working on together. I think it's really important, as I think about even expanding the office, I think we, you know, we need to consider, you know, do we have enough representation of everyone that's that's in our community? And do we have the representation out of our office that would then also make someone want to apply and work in the district? What are some things that we can do about doing that? And so I think it's really important that we reach out to all of these agencies and and build, continue to build those partnerships. And so to make sure that it goes beyond race, that it also goes, we think about gender. There's lots of different organizations that we can partner with to make sure that we are reaching every possible applicant that would be interested and be an asset that the Public Schools of Brookline.
Anyone else? All right, go ahead.
And it kicked me out again.
Claire, I'll I'll share the screen for you.
Thank you.
So we had spoken mainly about recruitment. Now to get into our retention efforts, the first thing is we have launched new online forums for employees to share their experiences, suggestions, et cetera. We've established multiple forums for them to do that in. First, we have reimagined the bullying and discrimination incident report forms that exist. And we have created options to report anonymously across all of those forums and also with reporter choice and who will receive the report in order to combat fear of retaliation. So and now all employees have the option of reporting to their squad administration and OEE or to solely OEE to combat that fear. We have also launched the OEE educator and staff feedback form, which is the establishment of a direct line of communication from educators and staff straight to central office. And this form, it measures adult belongingness, it measures adult perception of student belongingness. It provides a space for educators to rate their own knowledge of instructional best practices in a non-evaluative context and to share the supports that they feel they need to further their knowledge. So I really want to concentrate on the educator and staff feedback form. I think the main thing is establishing that trust and culture with educators and staff that are currently in our building that we honor their confidentiality so that they can disclose openly and we can have an honest picture of what's actually going on and what is the experience that every educator and staff member is having. And from that, I think that is really where we get a lot of bang for our buck in our retention efforts because it's the creation and the enshrining of systems that protect all employees. We've started to receive feedback from educators and staff on our form. And it has just been, I think it has been inspiring to see people are writing paragraphs on paragraphs about their experiences and what they want to see, the strengths that they're seeing in terms of belongingness. in terms of belongingness and also the areas for growth that we have at the individual school level as well as the district level. So we are already seeing a lot of results from those forms.
We can go to the next slide. To the next slide, I think also what we was really important to mention is that we we talk about trust. We know that our office has gone through a lot of changes. And so it's been, I think, really uplifting for myself and for Kristi. I've been here since July. She's been on just six weeks. The the level of trust that the the teachers and staff have had with us has been really amazing. Even before the forms went out, the emails that we were receiving, the people felt comfortable enough to share their personal experiences and want to partner with us and want to do the work. We often talk about the the work that we need to do, and this is not I work, this is we work. They want to be part of it. Some people do feel like they have a sense of belonging and they want to figure out how they could help support their colleagues in making sure that they have that sense of belonging and that they want to stay within the district.
I think also too, to your point, Claire, one thing is from the responses that we've been getting in the sheer time people are putting into sharing very personal stories at length. I think what we're seeing is people have wanted to say the truth, have wanted to disclose for a long time. But I think with so much change within the office, they haven't known exactly who to go to. And I think these aren't, first of all, making all these forms online because the incident report forms before did not have an online component. So you would have to go in person to report a discriminatory incident. Nobody wants to do that usually. But I think with these forms, we're creating the systems where they have a place to go and disclose. And it's also collecting the data for us at the same time. We can go to the next slide.
Brian and Natalia, go ahead.
You might be answering my question on the next slide. So I'll ask it, but just tell me if it's coming, which was the interplay between the feedback form and the belonging survey or they'll say the staff survey that Matt Dubois. So that's on the next slide?
Yes, we're gonna get into it.
Okay, great.
All right, Natalia.
I just had a question about, you know, I I really appreciate what you're saying that you're opening up this kind of, and you're receiving all this feedback. I do worry that they now there's an expectation that you will act on it. So there can be a lot of resentment or disappointment if you're unable to act on it. And I don't know, is this going to be collected and shared in some sort of aggregate way, obviously protecting confidentiality with us? Like, I'd love to know that you've received a hundred complaints from teachers or feelings. Like, I I'd like to know what that information was and then to to know that you feel empowered to be able to do something about it and to share back with them that you can. I don't know. I I just, I mean, I I think it's wonderful, but it also worries me a little bit.
And I I understand your worry, Natalie. I mean, I I've thought about that, too. I we've been trying to figure out when do we put this form out? And but I think it's when I I think we got to a point where it's like, we knew we had to put it out because we need to make sure that we were going to be able to get this information and then start to act on it. I think that trying to figure out what the themes are is going to be really important. I think we're starting to see themes already. So I think that those themes will help us really start to implement some structural changes and supports for our teachers and staff across the district. But I think it's also going to highlight some of the great things. I mean, I know someone, I I've shared this story before, someone who was onboarding soon after I started. And they had such an amazing experience from submitting an application to participating in the interview process and to onboarding. They felt like they were recruited. They felt like they were treated like a professional and they really feel like they have a sense of belonging already. And that's huge for a person who's brand new to the district. And so there, I think we also have to kind of highlight some of the the great things that are happening. And this is also another tool that's going to be able to do that.
Suzanne?
So it's great that you have the tool and that that's so easily accessible. I am a little worried that you could get bogged down in in this piece of the work and won't be able to do some of the other work. I think I think that was some of our concern for your predecessor that there's so many demands were made on her time and it was hard to set the priorities so that you weren't bogged down by anyone in particular. So and especially not having a full human resource department to help you out. I just I just get a little nervous that we're setting you up for not being able to be as successful as you might want to be and we would like you to be. So I just, I guess I would caution about how much you take on. I think it's great to hear the stories, but I don't know if you'll have, if you have the people power to do the follow up if people have real discrimination and complaints. I I didn't think that was going to be in your department, so I I could be totally wrong.
I think you're right. I think in regards to some of the some of the some of the information that we are going to be receiving would be deferred to HR. I think sometimes people don't know necessarily to to send it to HR. They think they've sent it to our office. And we we realize that that is not our role. I I do think there's a place for when sometimes people don't know what to do. They need, they feel more comfortable possibly reaching out to our office. But in regards to an HR issue, we know to defer that. We know those are things that we are unable to get involved in. But we do, there, I think there are nuances that we we might be able to help support with. I I too share some of your fears, Suzanne, in regards to how how much we can take on. But I do think it's really important that we we start to have an understanding of how do we move the the work of educational equity without understanding where the teachers fall in this work. I think this is a beginning of trying to understand where they are in their own journeys, how they feel a sense of belonging. And if they if they don't feel a sense of belonging, what is the work that we need to do in regards to professional development? And I know all of my pred my two predecessors did a lot of that work. We have folks who have participated in the C. What is the next step as we start to move forward in the district?
Also, I think one thing with the form is we were strategic in the way that we are collecting this data as well. So while people do have an open space to disclose more should they choose, this form also has very concrete, easy to aggregate data because they're measuring on a scale of sense of belonging for themselves, for students in general, and for students of historically marginalized backgrounds on little sense of belonging, some sense of belonging, strong sense of belonging, very strong sense of belonging. So that data is easy to pull and is easily, I think that lends itself to quicker action taking. Whereas we understand that it is time consuming to read those long disclosures. But first of all, not everybody's giving us the long disclosures. And I think we're going to, our plan is to bring in partners as needed, depending on the response. The like breadth of response that we get from educators and staff.
So cur currently, what happens when you do receive a disclosure? Do you then hand it off to HR? Do you handle it yourself?
Right now.
Out to the person who's been complained of?
So right now, this form was sent out to all educators and staff yesterday. So right now, we've received back about like thirty-four, the last time I checked, thirty-four responses. So that is all of those responses, the data. It's already in an Excel sheet. That has been that the data that is the multiple choice data, not the data that is extremely confidential, that has been shared with one of our partners as well. And and I think this is all, I think we're figuring out what this is going to look like based on the level of response that we get from the community. Because right now thirty-four responses is manageable, right? But if we're getting two hundred, that's going to change our strategy here. And I think we're going to amend that based on what the community gives us.
But I I just to speak to what you were just saying, David, in regards to, we 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 put out the Share Your Thoughts form and then we had the discrimination form that not the discrimination form, the 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 incident reporting form that you could report to OEE. And the reports that we have received in regards to if a employee is complaining about a discriminatory act or something that involves HR, we have passed that on to HR to Paul Toner.
All right.
That's not something that we would be handling.
Wait, I'm sorry. You got thirty-four responses to the the staff feedback form or the bullying and discrimination incident reports form?
Staff feedback form. It just went out yesterday night for the first time.
So can I just ask for the bullying, this is strictly for faculty and staff? Or this is the student bullying? This is only faculty and staff, correct? Which bullying are we talking about here?
We have multiple forms. So we have the ones for the for students and any community member that can fill out. And we also have one if teachers and staff want to fill out one directly to our office.
So those are all through your office?
Yes.
And and the does the yours, I thought the bullying form was part of a specific program we had that had a specific form, right? No, but I thought that there was a whole bullying curriculum and there was a specific form that went with it, no? I can't remember what it's called, maybe something BOPS or something like that. No one?
We have the incident reporting form, which is a form that teachers and staff can use. And we had the Share Your Thoughts form. So any of those forms that we have that are being filled out by teachers and staff with significant concerns that we can't handle, specifically around HR, we have passed them on.
How do you determine what you can handle in terms of and what you pass off to HR? Is it that if it's more of a systems type grievance, that's something you would handle and something specific you would hand off?
I think it's any kind of HR issue that's involved with, if it's something in between, between a teacher and a supervisor, that needs to be handed off to HR. That's not something that we would handle.
All right, anyone else? All right, back to you.
There we go. So the next diversity retention effort is centers around the staff climate survey. So in partnership with Senior Director of Clinical Services and Social Emotional Learning, Dr. Matt Dubois, we are creating a brand new staff climate survey. It's approximately sixty-five to seventy items, most likely. It's a comprehensive survey. It measures climate at the individual school as well as the district level. And this will be rolled out this school year, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Moving forward, the plan is that it would be given multiple times throughout the year, so twice, once to get benchmark data and the second to progress monitor. It will provide district wide as well as school specific data. And it will be the first time that staff climate surveys have been distributed to staff by the district since twenty eighteen. The there's strong focus in the staff climate survey on belongingness.
Thanks. So can you just help me understand the relationship between the survey and the form in terms of making sure people are, that we have a strong data set for one data source?
Right. So the staff climate survey is much more comprehensive. It's, as we said before, sixty-five to seventy items. It's covering pretty much everything. The thing is, we don't want to wait until this gets rolled out because this it needs approval by, it requires collaboration with administrators in central office as well as at individual schools. We don't want to wait that full time to have any data on the sense of belongingness that exists for adults in our building. So the OEE educator and staff feedback form is to, it's more informal. It's much shorter. It's only a few item survey. That is to help us get that data in the interim so we can have an idea of where it is most pertinent that we direct our efforts, knowing that we're going to have this much more comprehensive and full data set coming down the pike.
I would say that the OEE form is more of a snapshot as opposed to a comprehensive climate survey that Matt Dubois and Kristi were putting together.
So just to follow up on that, are you going to sunset your form once the full survey comes online? Or how are you going to proceed when there's two mechanisms?
So the OEE staff educator and staff feedback form, I think this is more of a short term solution. The way that we're imagining it, I think, is educators have, you know, two weeks to get this data back to us. And then that form closes at that time. Then this, then this will be rolled out. So it's not that they're both going to live at the same time. One is for the interim, the OEE staff and educator feedback is for the interim. And then this is the main climate measure.
Thank you.
David, I have a question. Sorry. And I know this is, it's already late. Since cultural awareness is part of the title, I do wonder with, you know, having heard from all the parents who feel that staff may not understand what, you know, Jewish and Israeli students are feeling, what Arab students are doing, can we add a few questions around? Or may themselves feel very much torn about not being able to speak? Like, I think this, and I don't know when this will go out, it may not be as relevant, but even reflecting, I think, or even in a short term survey, I think it would be useful to get some information that they, about how they feel about their cultural awareness. Is that what you're capturing by cultural awareness?
I'm so glad you asked because yes, it's a huge piece of the survey surrounding at the staff level, that individual practitioner's knowledge in terms of what do they feel their knowledge is like about the people that they're around? And also, how do they feel in terms of other people's cultural knowledge towards them? So it's measuring both. Also, this is the measure where we are asking extensive demographic optional and extensive demographic questions that allow for people to identify their religion, their ethnicity on a much broader scale. So that we know who we have in front of us, how they choose to identify, not how just Desi chooses to identify them, but how they choose to identify, which will guide our formal cultural awareness efforts moving forward.
Okay. So the next piece we have in our retention is our partnership with the Teachers Lounge.
If you can pause just a moment. Sorry, we had another question. Suzanne?
Well, we know that surveys are tricky to get responses to. So will will teachers be asked to do this during a staff meeting? Or is it going to be some incentive for them to respond? And and how will we know if we get a get a cross section of responses rather than just a particular group?
So staff, staff climate surveys, I think the process is typically very formal. They're given time to do it within the school day. That's allotted for. So I think that is also, that makes it a lot easier to get those responses. Also, I think in bringing in so many people, adminis individual school principals, assistant principals, teachers, et cetera, I think that also increases buy-in. We're being very strategic about the way that we want to roll this out to ensure that we get the greatest number of responses possible. Also, I had just wanted to to note, I think there was some emotion that came up when I disclosed about the thirty-four responses. This just went out yesterday and educators and staff are aware that they have a time frame to do, that this isn't something that is, it's due tomorrow. So we expect to get significantly more response because they have a long window to do this in.
All right, go ahead.
No, I'm
Sorry, Stephen?
It's following up on what Suzanne said. I, my understanding was that the the climate survey does have booked time. But that, but this is, as you said, you didn't want to, you you don't want to wait, you want to catch a snapshot right now. So this is in addition to the climate survey for now. So so how would that work with?
So I was speaking, sorry about that. I was speaking to, I think, when I had said beforehand that we had received thirty-four responses to the OEE educator and staff feedback form. I think you had a little bit of a reaction that was kind of like, oh, that's
Oh, no. Sorry, my reaction was I stupidly thought that those might be complaints of bullying or discrimination that you were receiving. And I exhaled a sigh of relief when you told me that's not what you had been receiving.
No, no. I thought you were nervous that that response number was low, but also educators
Not at all.
Know that that's open for a few weeks.
That was a sigh of relief that that you were merely getting responses to that survey. But I think Suzanne was asking about how are we going to guarantee an adequate sample? Since this is divorced from the more formal climate survey, is that right, Suzanne? Yeah. So so that question, I think, I'm still curious about how that's going to go.
I I think what we're going to get from the OEE form is going to be, we we hope to get as many as possible. But I think it's going to give us a snapshot of what what is happening in the now. I think what we're going to get in collaboration with Clinical Services and SEL is going to be a much more comprehensive tool that's going to give us much more comprehensive data. And that will take place sometime in the spring and that'll be something that's happening. Like Kristi said, sometimes when when you're doing something like that, that's going to be contractual, it's going to be during the day where folks will have time to actually complete that survey. But what we have from our But what we have from our office solely is that snapshot feedback form. They got to, to get a, really get a sense as to how people are feeling right now that can help inform some of the work that we're trying to do as we start to develop what our roadmap's going to be out of our office.
Got it. So maybe, so maybe, so this might have limited validity. Maybe we can look at this kind of like as a piloting.
Yes.
The instrument. And then in the spring, we're going to get a much more robust capturing of the data. Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I know we're pushing it a little bit, but I do want to highlight the Teachers Lounge and the work that they're doing. You can see, I won't read the slide, but their vision is, their, their mission really is around recruitment revitalization and retention. I want to really highlight the revitalization piece. This is so important for, for folks who, when we think about teachers who are going into the field, oftentimes between two to five years, they get burnt out. They spend a lot of time working with practitioners, trying to make sure, how do you re-energize them? How do you keep them staying in the field? And specifically as BIPOC staff is spread out across the Commonwealth. They are very much like MPDE where they have a network of people that I think is really helpful in supporting teachers as they're trying to decide, you know, how do I stay in this work and continue to do it? And if we go to the next slide, we have the Classroom Leaders of Color the Clock Fellowship is really something that we're very interested in and have been talking about. For our new practitioners who are coming on board, it's really important for folks to have a mentor. We know that we have our in-district mentor program and we hope to be piloting a mentor, BIPOC mentor program for our BIPOC staff. But it's also really good as we think about having a model and a program that new practitioners can participate in to have a real cohort that they can lean into to help with resources and how to really increase their efforts and wanting to stay in, in the field. And so we really believe that partnering with the Teachers Lounge will be able to help with that retention work.
Helen?
Quick question. Are we, have you thought about using some of our retired BIPOC teachers?
Yes, we have. I've actually spoke to Malcolm Calthorne about that just yesterday and trying to actually really kind of put a net out and try to see what we can do about bringing some of our former BIPOC practitioners back to help do that, help support in that work.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions? I know we were asking quite a bit as he went along. Thank you very much for your patience and hearing us out and answering us. We do have one more. Sarah?
So I think that that felt like it was a lot of time, but it was really helpful to get to know you and to sort of, sort of feel like we have an understanding of what's going on. So I think it was time worth spent. So thank you.
And I apologize for all the technical glitches. It seems like, you know, we always have something on our end.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Oops, sorry. Stephen?
Really quickly, David, I don't, I don't, bestie, I don't know if we have formal liaisons to care and bead. We didn't have them formally last year. I served in an informal liaison role. I don't know if we want to designate that again this year.
I think we could. How do others feel?
Yeah, the, the, that was run out of the Office for Educational Equity, but there was a school committee liaison to both groups. It seems
I think we'll probably go in that direction. Yes.
Just, just wanted to suggest them.
Okay.
If, if, if OEE wants to, a liaison from us, from the school committee.
That'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate the offer.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. And we very much look forward to receiving more data and learning more about your experiences as this continues to unfold.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
I, I might have missed this. I know we've talked about a strategy for OEE. Have we, is there a timeline established for that yet? Yeah, to hear the strategy and to hear the entire strategy. I feel like we got a lot of information tonight, but and we got our toes dipped into some of the questions on like the recruitment and retention strategy. We started to discuss it. I'm like, is there a point, have we already scheduled or forecasted when we will actually receive sort of the comprehensive strategy? Oh, in spring. Okay, I missed it. Okay, that's all. Ah, sorry. It was a lot of information that we were processing. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you again. And we'll certainly be hearing some more from you as you continue to roll out these initiatives. So next
One thing, thank you to Jody, Claire and Christina. But also give OEE an extra shout out as the initial part of their presentation was not they, it's joint partly in their wheelhouse, but it actually belongs to Human Resources. So I want to be clear about that. So a lot of the detailed questions that you all were asking, they were doing a great job serving as proxies, but that actually goes to Human Resources. And so in the future, our Human Resources Director and that team will be presenting that portion, that initial portion of the presentation. So thank you all very much.
All right. So we will now move to school committee actions. And committee members will be very happy to hear that B and C are not going to be discussed tonight. So we're just going to be going over the proposed revision of the PSB Wellness Policy First Reading.
Wait, why doesn't B happening? I know I C isn't, but why doesn't B happen?
So Town Council still hasn't quite gotten back to me, but I think we're getting closer. I've had some further communications.
Can I ask a question about B?
Sure.
Even though we're not going to, I had thought that in a prior iteration, we had talked about, thank you, adding some sort of reference to the fact that smoking, vaping, et cetera, were not even, were not legal to be done on school grounds?
That's right. And that's exactly what we're waiting on.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So PSB Wellness Policy, and we are joined by Tricia Laham, Sasha Palmer, Matt Dubois, Carlin Weyyama.
Wayne Oyama.
Wayne Yoyama.
Wayne Oyama, like Wayne Oyama.
Okay, Wayne Oyama. All right. It does. Thank you for that. All right, I don't know who would like to kick off for the revisions that have been made. Don't have to be quite as detailed as your presentation of policy. So for those of you who weren't here at five o'clock, they've already presented. So maybe just a quick overview, what are the main areas of change? And that could be sufficient.
Sasha, you want to start again? And then we'll just take it from there?
I will. I will start. I, I don't think I have the document up to share my screen, but we have gone over the document. We did a comparison with the current wellness policy and the updates to the wellness policy. This was through our triennial policy review that is a requirement of the USDA. We're required every three years to do an update, a review of the policy and update the policy if necessary. I'll start with the few updates that I see are outstanding updates that I've seen in the food service section of the wellness policy. And that is basically, there were actually about three items. And these were driven by either USDA policies or state policies that were recently, or US requirements or regulation that were recently implemented. The first that we identified was the school breakfast program. And having students having access to the breakfast program. In our previous policy, that was not explicitly stated that school breakfast will be available to all students and available during the school day. For this update, we're adding that as an update due to the universal free meals program that was passed this year, all schools offering school breakfast, school, the National School Lunch Program must also offer school breakfast program and having students have access to free breakfast, school breakfast. So that is the first addition. Secondly, we added the updated sustainability policy that was passed last, in school year, I think, twenty twenty-two, that we incorporated that sustainability policy into the school wellness policy as a lot as a number of items in that policy does govern the school meals program. And in that, in that sustainability policy as well, there is also the need for adding local or hyper-local nutritious organic food items. So that is also explicitly stated. One addition that, or one significant addition that was not because it wasn't being done or it wasn't being offered or it wasn't in place, but it was just not explicitly stated in the school previously, in the current policy, is offering water during the school meals program. All schools currently do offer it. We just wanted to make sure that it is explicitly stated in the wellness policy. Those are the three main food service items. Additionally, we are looking into updating the JSI list and ensuring that this wellness policy does keep up with the new trends or new requirements of the John Stalker A-list. For, as, as soon as those policies are updated or anything changes, we explicitly put language in this policy that we will follow those, those regulations. I think that is it for food services. I'll turn over to Carolyn, who is next.
Thanks, Sasha. So some of the main changes or differences was that we added some of the the new standards that just got approved, the comprehensive health and physical education standards for math. She said the DESI frameworks that just, just came through this fall. And they actually align really well with much of what was already in the policy. So we just added that in and then taking a look at some of the, the crosswalks between the new health frameworks and some of the SEL frameworks and the science frameworks. A lot of those crosswalks that are identified are also sort of come out in this policy, which was really great for Matt and I especially as we look at the work that we do. So one place that we did was we brought the health and physical education section. We did a little moving of the policy. So we made, we had physical education, then health education. And then we moved the daily recess and the physical activity portion of that policy below that because I really, I said this in the first meeting, that, you know, physical education, health education or educational environments and certainly want students moving all throughout the day, but recess is a different, is a different environment and is not, should not be replaced, replace physical education. So one of the things we did was we made sure that the, the pieces of physical education requirements, graduation requirements, what, what, what students can do to earn wellness credit at Brookline High School. We made sure that that's all aligned with what we're currently doing. We have the, we have the lifetime wellness class, the class that's required in ninth grade. And we made sure that that was correct in the, in the, in the updated policy. And then we also talked a little bit about comprehensive health education. And we said that we aim to provide comprehensive health education K through twelve and that we are prioritizing, you know, sort of adding it into places where we have identified gaps. And one of those places is sixth grade, which we've all identified as a, as a gap in, in sort of the health education that begins in fifth grade with intra-adolescence and then we go into sixth grade. Matt and I know well, you know, doing the YRBS study and some of the other data collection and some of the other screening pieces that we, we, we don't have a place in the sixth grade to do all that. And we've had to over the past couple of years, find different places to do that type of work. And with all of our work that we're doing across the district around not just health education, but certainly all of our work with substantive awareness and prevention, we know that, that in media safety and digital safety and social media, you know, helping students be safe online and the mental health literacy work that we're doing. We know that that work needs to start earlier and we know that we need a place to make sure that it happens. Matt is doing amazing work with his teams with the second step K through five, but we, we've got this sort of massive gap in sixth grade. So that's our plan is hopefully making sure that that happens. And then the only other places I think that we had some wordsmithing was around, you know, just making sure that certified licensed educators are teaching health education and teaching physical education and making sure that students are having access to that education. And then I think that was it for the, oh, there's a lot about nutrition education in this policy. And currently, because we don't have any, you know, sort of dedicated health education K to five, we will need to think about ways in which we're going to implement some of that nutrition education, whether it be through, as I mentioned, the science, some of the crosswalking with science, some of the work that we do with SEL, you know, in, in the classroom, how we will do that type of education K to five. So I just wanted to, I'll take any questions anyone has about my section.
Any questions? Go ahead, Nalia.
Mostly for Sasha, actually. Sasha, the water, how are you providing it? Is it, I mean, I know there's water fountains. Is that what you mean? Or are you going to have like pitchers on tables and things like that?
Um, so currently for all the schools that, it's both. Some schools, once we have the, the water fountains in, that is actually in compliance. And for those that do not have it, we are providing water fountains or water in water, just whatever you call that, in our water containers with cups.
Okay. I, I asked because I, you know, of the plastics and all of, all of that discussion of sustainability, like how do we, how do we do it in a way that is not just little mini plastic bottles? The other question that I know raised it with you is around sugar content. And you were saying that the sugar is, especially for breakfast. I do, I am very concerned about that from a public health perspective. And I know you've said that the standards are going to change, but can we be proactive and go ahead of the curve?
Uh, we actually are. It's not explicitly stated, but under food service sustainability, under the sustainability policy, we do, we have reduced sugar or hypo, we, we, we've switched over to high protein breakfast. There are some items that we do not carry. We carry very low sugar cereal if we are carrying those cereal. And in terms of the sustainability and the, the single-use items, most of the schools or all the schools that are offering water is offering reusable cups. We try as much as possible to limit any single-use items. And if we are using single-use, it is compostable.
Helen?
Yeah. So is this the totality of the, of the policy or is there more?
There's a bit more, there are a couple more sections we're going to get through. So do you have any questions either?
General question for the total policy. I'm wondering what the financial implications of these changes are.
For food service, there is not, well, I think that maybe is for Carolyn who is doing those changes.
Yeah. Helen, there'll be some, there will be some FTE implication for sixth grade. And those discussions and conversations are happening, you know, with my, with my supervisors and we are like, that's part of the reason we're having this meeting now is to make sure that we are planning thoughtfully about not trying to implement a policy that we can't implement. So we are looking towards how that will look next year.
And at the high school, are kids still allowed to contract out? Yeah.
Currently, students in grades ten through twelve are still allowed to earn their wellness credit through the sports contract. And, you know, we, we require the ninth grade lifetime wellness class. And we also require that students earn wellness credit every year, which I always, anytime I get an opportunity to say that, I say it out loud a lot. And if they do play their sport or do their I say aloud a lot. Um and if they do play their sport or do their, they have to do recovery credit. But so it's a making sure that students understand that's an every year, every year requirement. Um and yeah, I think, I think some of the work that we're going to be doing as we plan out um is, you know, sort of where do we already have um areas to put it and making sure that students are getting what they need um and planning for that. One of the reasons I actually urged the committee for us to come to you earlier uh is because, you know, coming from sort of a school-based uh level for, you know, twenty plus years, I know how this policy will look in, in real time on the, on, in the school, right? If you're gonna have a recess amount of minutes, if you're gonna have mandatory um amount of minutes for you know, physical education, if you're gonna add in, in the sixth grade health. So um part of the reasoning for us to come to you tonight is to make sure that we have this information um to the school leaders prior to them, you know, making their schedule and doing their staffing and thinking about what that's gonna look like as we go into uh two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just getting back to the theme that uh Natalia was asking about briefly, I do want to point out that during the uh policy subcommittee meeting earlier today, we had a student participate who's here right now, uh Ezra Kleinbaum. And he had a couple of suggestions that are food related that are also compatible with our sustainability policy that was passed last year. And those suggestions were to uh include a curriculum that covers the benefits of uh eating plant-based foods as well as the benefits of eating fiber-rich proteins and minimally processed foods. And again, we already have that in our sustainability policy. So to the extent that we fold elements of the sustainability policy into this updated wellness policy, I think that's something that uh we're very likely to take up. Mariah? All right, we don't usually do this, but I'll, I'll go ahead.
Uh thank you so much and I'll be brief. Um nice to see lots of familiar faces. For those who don't know me, my name is Ezra Kleinbaum. I'm a junior at Brookline High School. I am the president of the Warriors for Animal Rights Club, a member of the P S B Sustainability Task Force. And I was a member of the Brookline Composting Advisory Committee back when that was a thing. And for the last two and change years now, I've been working with Sasha and with the Food Services Department to expand access to plant-based foods in the public schools of Brookline um for student health, for uh environmental sustainability and for animal welfare. Uh and as Mr. Pearlman mentioned, that's something that was incorporated into the sustainability policy last October. Uh and many aspects of that sustainability policy have been folded into this wellness policy. And so to add um just the uh the education that, that students will learn, the importance of eating plant-based foods to be coupled with the plant-based foods that are being served is really powerful. And that's something that uh right from the get-go, when I first reached out to Sasha Palmer, she was like, this needs to be happening. In order for uh you know, uh an initiative to be successful in serving plant-based foods, there needs to be education coupled with it. And for the last two and a half years, that's been something that's been led by students, including myself, and has been really successful. Uh we've reached every high schooler, everyone, every student at B H S through the advisory curriculum. We've reached every fifth grader in the district through a fifth grade climate fair. Um so these things are already happening, but what these bullet points that I've suggested would do is sort of institutionalize and guarantee that this education continues um year after year, even as students cycle out and when there may not be students who will run these kinds of initiatives. Um but the programs that will guarantee that more plant-based foods are being served in the cafeteria will continue. And so that kind of education is really important to continue alongside it. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Anyone have any questions? All right, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Mariah?
Thanks. Um I have some like edit stuff sort of generally around like inclusive language. I see stuff around families and parents and I'm hoping we can be more inclusive in the next draft. Um on the food service section, the very first sentence, like Roman numeral one, section A, subsection one. The sentence says it's acknowledged that the feeding of children is primarily a family responsibility and that bothers me because feeding children is everybody's responsibility. And we're the school district and that feels like we're trying to say it's not our responsibility. So I would like to suggest that that sentence is struck, like the sent, that section can just start, every school will operate a food service program to ensure that all children's, all students have affordable access, et cetera. Um going down to number three in that same section. I was a little confused because I thought that the student restaurant, that students could go to the student restaurant. Any student, you don't have to be in the program, as I understood. Is that, is that incorrect? I thought students can eat at Tap and Green too.
It is, that is, that is the practice. Oh, sorry. Trying to answer. Uh so that is the practice, but it actually go, directly goes against the U S D A regulations.
Because I, I think that we should reconcile our policy with our practice so that they don't, right? Like if students are eating there, it shouldn't say in the policy that only students enrolled in the program can eat there.
In, um but in order to be compliant, that was, students can eat there, but it cannot be in compete. It cannot be competing with the food service program. The U S D A prohibits any competition. That's what um with any food, any food sale during the school lunch period. Once school lunch is being served, there should be no other food or any other sale of food that's competing with the national school lunch program. That's a U S D A regulation. So if we kept it that way, it would be in violation of that regulation.
So maybe that paragraph just needs a little bit of clarification on that. Um then number four, it talks about financially self-sorting, self-supporting and budget neutrality. However, in the current context, we're running a profit. And I would like us to be really explicit in our policies about how we use those monies to reinvest in higher quality food, food services, whatever it is that the food services program needs. It is great that we use some of the food services money to support custodial and other needs in the building, to the extent that they're relevant to cafeteria. I want us to make sure that we're not over relying on food services to the detriment of food services and funding some of those other things. So I, I would personally want it to be strongly represented that the money that is in that budget, when there's a surplus, supports high-quality food, you know, in additional improvements in the program to support student student benefits directly. Does that make sense? You see what I'm saying on that? I'm asking you Sasha, okay. I wasn't sure if you knew.
No, I do. And it, it, the, the U S D A policy does state that it has to be directly related. If we're not charging any other department for custodial services, then we shouldn't be charging food services account. Any food, any, any funds that is in um the food service revolving account should be reinvested in the program.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we do that actively, that's really stated in the program, whether it's, I don't know, buying strawberries that are eight dollars a box these days because kids like them. I don't know what it is, right? But I just wanna make sure that that's, that that's our clear intent, that we're not holding funds for, but we're really making kids get enjoyable food and enriching that experience. Going to section B.
Are you asking for a, a change in the, in what's written?
Yeah.
Where?
In section one A four, that it, this talks about what happens when it doesn't run a surplus, basically that like that the program shouldn't be starved, even if it's not self-sustaining. But in our current environment, the exact opposite is true. We're running large surpluses, which is a great problem to have. And I wanna make sure that we're clear about we want the money to be spent on kids eating lunch, really nice lunch. Okay. Uh going to B four, which is about menus. And it says that um information about ingredients and nutritional value would be provided on request. And I, I think somewhere else here, it says that it's actually provided um in G six, it's provided readily available to students. And I just would like to make sure that we actually have this information through the through the system, like really easily available for people. Um especially ingredients, because some of the things like they've say like, I'm making it up, Mediterranean bento box. I don't actually know what is. I've never known what's in the Mediterranean bento box. So it would be great to know, especially some of these more unusual, you know, menu labels, what's going on in there.
It is available in the family portal that um a list of ingredients. On our website, we do have the nutritionals. Um but the family portal does offer additional information that's um including list of ingredients and so on in all the items.
Maybe I haven't looked, maybe that's new, but I wasn't able to find it in the past or pictures of what things looked like. Some had stock pictures, but I just, it would be really important, I think. Um I have a question on C one. It says P S B will employ a school nutrition director. Is that the food service director? Who is the nutrition director?
It's the school food service director.
Okay.
Same position, one position that oversees.
Okay. David, do you think we can just make sure the names are consistent? Okay.
Yeah.
And then um I have a couple of notes, which I can just share that are more like um, well, there's two big ones. One is I would love to see how we can transition away from meat altogether, not just meatless Mondays, but really pushing that much, much further. Ezra was here. I, I think that we should be doing that. I think it's great for the program and great for students and great. I mean, we know so much about that. It would be wonderful to really push that much further than we have and make for any meals that we do offer meat. It's like a, something you have to opt into as opposed to opting out of. So I would strongly like to, I'm not sure if that's, not sure if that's here clearly. Um it says accommodating special dietary needs is meat. I don't know if any of that's here, but just calling it meatless Mondays implies one day out of five, we've like achieved our goal. And I'm not sure that's, that's not how I feel about it. Um and then I wasn't, I was a little confused about uh competitive food and beverages and how that compares to what's going on with um the food fundraisers, like after-school bake sales. And I was curious, i- is that supposed to be represented in that, this policy or is after-school bake sales somewhere else? I couldn't tell what was going on there.
So it is represented in the policy and it should be because of uh what the U S D A defines as the school day. Um anything that, any food sale must be done at least half an hour or thirty minutes after the end of the school day. So that's why it is um represented in the policy.
Okay, so, okay, so it's the food at school events, field trip celebrations and fundraisers. Is that correct?
And yes, I'll go back.
Okay. Is there some sort of policy around guidance to those programs on avoiding single-use plastics as well? I think it's so great what you're doing, but when I see these things, they tend to have everything wrapped in Saran Wrap and et cetera. Is that something we have any sort of influence over?
Um that may be something that we could flush out in. I don't know if that's explicitly stated in, I don't think it is explicitly stated in the um sustainability policy, but because the sustainability of um policy does talk about reducing single use in food services, once anything that is coming from food services is governed under that policy. So it would take in school um school uh field trips um and any, anything that food service is operating in term, if it's a, a school event that is non-food service that's outside of the school day, then there's nothing that states um that we have any control over what is used.
But some of this does imply we do, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mariah, you're talking, there's two. There's the one, there's fundraisers uh there's fundraisers during the school day and then there's fundraisers uh on behalf of the schools.
Competitive food and beverage in school and then fundraisers and then competitive food and beverage.
But one is much more lax than the other because you can't really fully regulate the ones sold on behalf of the schools that are outside of the schools, right? Because that's the one that has that lax language that says, we'll also feature rather than we'll, we'll just sell the smart snacks, right? Right Sasha? So I'm assuming that's the former one that you'd wanna encourage the, the reusables. And it's the latter one that you don't really have a lot of say over what for instance, parents bring their baked goods in.
Yes.
That could be like a, an education campaign maybe, but the former one, you can have a lot more say in what goes on because it's, it's on school property presumably.
Okay.
Agreed. Yes.
All right. So why don't we get to some of the other categories in the wellness policy?
Sure, I can, I can, I can trap up. So we have just one more uh section. So section four, social, emotional health and wellbeing. And so you're gonna see uh more content in this version and then the previous one. And that's really reflecting uh the work that we've done over the last three years. And, and we felt it was really important to codify what it is that we know is really important for kids in order to feel well. And so you'll see language uh that explicitly uh talks about belonging and how foundational that is to kids feeling well. You'll see a lot of language around actively teaching kids the skills they need in order to feel well. So you'll see language around uh teaching kids around social media, around making healthy um decisions around substance use and relationships and, and things like that. Um you also see um explicit language around uh tying wellness to kids' capacity to do well in school. Um you'll see language. And finally, um you also see language around me, really making sure that all staff who are working with kids, which is about everybody in our buildings um have the support that they need in order to support kids' wellness. So those are some of the updates that you'll see um in that section.
Natalia?
Actually, that's maybe a question uh for the section before in health education. When is sexual and productive health taught in P S B? I thought that was fifth grade and now I see that there is no fifth grade.
So fifth grade currently has an intro to adolescence unit, uh which is taught by the classroom teacher. Um and it is part of um health, it's, it's not a, like a separate health education class, if you will. It's taught by the classroom teacher. It's a unit within um the, the, their fifth grade experience. So we could add in fifth grade I T A, but there's no like you know, scope and sequence of fifth grade health at this time. There's just fifth grade intra-adolescence. Does that answer your question?
And then, and then they get more in, in seventh.
Right?
Okay.
They get, they get in seven, they get nothing in sixth grade yet. Uh and then in seventh grade, they get two days a week for the full school year. In eighth grade, they get two days a week for the full school year. And in ninth grade, uh they have one semester of lifetime wellness, which is four days a week, five days a week, depending on the way the schedule works. And it's, it's generally like two days a week of physical activity and two days a week of health education or physical education, health education. And um there is an advanced wellness class at Brookline High School uh open to juniors and seniors. Our program is elective programming. Once you get to tenth grade, you can, you know, choose your course. And uh that advanced wellness class also has additional health education. Um and as some, as some of you might know, we have one other class, our integrated wellness class at Brookline High currently. Um that is a great class that's uh integrated health education, physical education um for our affinity group. And that's for tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders. But those are all courses that are um opt-in elective courses. Does that answer your question?
Mariah?
My question's actually about evaluation. So I don't know, when we, can I ask now? Okay. Uh it's sort of a question about do you, how do you envision this happening? Is this an external evaluation or is this an internal evaluation?
The evaluation of the policy itself.
Well, I, I think you say you have progress assessments about your compliance and the progress made and the extent to which you compare. That's the triennial progress um assessments.
Right. So we did a triennial uh leading up to reviewing this policy and updating it. We will do that again three years from now. We, we went with a coach who uh last two years, as we reviewed our policy and updated it with a coach from DESI Framingham State who helped help us realize what we had to include that we might have been doing, but wasn't explicitly stated in our previous policy. Um so part of that is part of the triennial assessment. Um we have members from various parts of, of the school community. I think one of the things that we are aiming to do is to have uh a principal or more likely a vice principal join our meetings and be an active
and be an active part so that we can ensure that we are offering at each school, doing what we're saying we're doing and have a more readily visible idea of whether we're successful, where we're falling short. So that's one measure.
Do you know how much the, the evaluation that you did for this round costs? And, and is there recurring funding for that in the budget?
There was no, this was offered to us. It was something that was offered to our community. We took the offer and found it very helpful.
So we participated, so Desi is running, is currently running an evaluation, a two-tier evaluation and wellness policy update for our school district. We participated in tier one, which was the assessment portion of the, the triennial assessment portion of the policy. And they gave us a, they set us up with JSI. So that's covered under Desi, it was not a financial cost to the district. And then tier two, which would now be the implementation of the policy, is also with the assistance of Desi and the continuation of the assistance from JSI. Both are off, which are at no cost to the district. This may be the same operation that they run over the next three years when we do get back to doing our triennial.
So I'll ask, I'm gonna ask a little different line. This, will you be making sure that there's funding for the evaluation that's needed in the budget going forward? It's not, I, I mean, I think Helen's question earlier was well put, too, about the financial implications. We should be talking about these things so no one's surprised by them in three years. So we make sure that we're adhering, we don't sign up or vote a policy that we can't, that we aren't funding to do what we all think is the right thing to do.
We're required by law to have this policy, so either way, we need to have it.
In that case, Linus, are we funding, are we, we have funding to implement this policy that we're required by law to have?
Dr. Gibbons is on, so she'll capture that note and.
Sounds good.
Try to figure out some ways to pay for it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, well, thank you very much. This was a first read of the policy, so we're going to have it on our next school committee agenda as well. We could potentially vote it in at that point. But I think we'll certainly be having some of the revisions that we discussed today so that we have a new markup draft that we vote on the next time. Thank you very much, everyone.
This is a lot of work, two years, that's wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, we will now move to subcommittee and liaison reports. Capital improvements, Helen?
Considering the hour, I'm going to be very brief. We had a meeting. We discussed, capital subcommittee meeting, we discussed the Clark Road relocation plan and the Baldwin School renovation, both works in progress right now. There's places, Keith will be having a pre-K along with Driscoll taking two of the pre-class classes that counts for all the pre-K classes. The staff, many of the staff will be going to Baldwin and to other schools more to come. We talked about the CIP grant process and time, timeline for that. And it sounds like, I guess, the town school partnership next week, this, the budget might be put out. And that we would be giving up, obviously, the Clark Road lease coming this June and that, you know, hopefully there would be monies from that to, to do some of our CIP projects. Also, just one note, the Pierce School Building Committee will be hearing the sustainability efforts within the building on January 11th. And anybody who would like to is welcome to come. It's from 4:00 to 6:00 on January 11th. And I, I think it's going to be only on Zoom. I don't think we're gonna do it in person. So you're all welcome to, to listen to the great things we're doing there. I think in, you know, Valerie always talked about Driscoll in the opening. I think that's it.
All right, thank you, Helen. Suzanne, curriculum?
We are going to have a joint meeting with finance on Tuesday, the 19th, at 4:30. Is it only remote or are we also doing room 111, I thought? Hybrid, so you can come in person or you can watch. Some of the topics are going to be the course selection at the high school, also talking about class size at the high school, how that impacts finance and budget. There's one other thing.
Review and preview of summer programs.
Yes, review and preview of summer programs. Those are the curriculum side, and you have some finance.
Yeah. It's too late for me to remember what, so I'm gonna, I need to look at it. Oh, you got it. I'm hoping we're gonna finalize all of that, but.
You remembered mine, that was.
Yeah, before we leave, yeah.
Okay.
So that somewhat segues into finance. Anything you want to add?
We're having a meeting next week with curriculum. What else did I want to mention? That's, that's enough. We're having a meeting.
Anything exciting in accounts payable?
I was, I, I'm not getting coherent at this point. I was enjoying looking at everything tonight. And there wasn't anything super different that I, that caught my eye to report on for tonight.
All right.
Yeah.
Valerie, DEHA? All right. For policy, we met earlier today. We discussed the wellness policy, of course, and had a presentation on it. We also further discussed the life of the school activities policy. We had multiple draft updates. A special thank you to Mariah for having a very thorough one. We are going to be soliciting feedback from various stakeholders before proceeding with the next step, which would likely be incorporating that feedback, of course, at a subsequent policy meeting, and then potentially voting to refer it to full school committee. Are there any additional liaison updates? Stephen?
We had a coordination meeting of the sustainability, the climate task force sometime last week, and we'll have our next one on January 19th. What are the highlights? All four subgroups checked in, they're on pace. We're going to be distributing surveys to teachers on some of the climate education materials, content, curriculum that have been developed to date. I think the BEU is going to assist with its dissemination as well. I talked to Justin Brown on that, he seemed amenable. That's the highlight.
I'm not sure I've ever seen such zeal for a task force than I have for sustainability. So when I, when I go to various civic events around town routinely, people will come up to me and talk about how excited they are about a sustainability task force and multiple students as well. So this really engages a broad cross-section of our population, and that's great to see.
Yeah, speaking of which, I think at some point, we're gonna have to name some award after Roger Grandi. He's just volunteering for so many worthy things across PSB. So I'm gonna move something along those lines eventually.
All right, any other updates? Go ahead, Mariah.
It's only a partial update, but I just wanted to highlight that this week we had multiple visits to the schools, and it was really nice. And Monday, it was Natalia and I at Beep at Lynch. And Tuesday, Stephen and I went to Baker. And something happened Wednesday, which I didn't go to, right? Did we have one Wednesday?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, and then Thursday, today, we went to Heath, and that was Suzanne and Sarah and I. And then last night, I was at the BHS PTO. And then a week and a half ago, Helen and I were at the Heath PTO meeting. So it's been nice being out and about and, and seeing things. That's all, and I think we have more next week, so that's nice. Yeah, exactly.
All right, is there any new business? Seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. Good night, everyone.